Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is May 19th, 2022. It's 5:30 PM. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And for setting on our agenda tonight is postponements and orders of the day. We have, I believe, eighteen items on our calendar. We have a request from staff to move item sixteen to our June 7th, 2022, regular agenda. And item sixteen is the community funding grant program that was evaluated by our Parks and Recreation Commission. And so is there anybody from our council that has a request for postponements and orders of the day other than that? All right, seeing no hands, I'll check in with staff briefly. On behalf of the City Manager's Office, who's here today? Is the City Manager attending?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. I see, I see your name. All right, welcome. So are there any postponements, orders of the day, requests from staff?
If we could postpone the plastics ordinance until further out, either...
Yeah, that's been postponed already, Jim.
Oh, it did? Okay, never mind.
Okay, so may I have a motion from council to take item sixteen and move it to our regular council meeting on June 7th? Councilmember Way?
So moved.
Okay, very good. Is there a second? I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised. Please second it audibly.
Yep, I second.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I don't see any further hands raised for discussion. I see Councilmember Moore has a hand raised. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, so perhaps I don't have the right agenda pulled up and maybe someone could help me. Because when I look at item sixteen, I'm seeing "Consider Accepting Accounts Payable." Am I just looking at the wrong agenda? And could someone send me the right one if I've, if I'm looking at this in error?
I think you're probably looking at the wrong agenda. So I would ask the City Clerk's Office to have someone send you the agenda for the special meetings.
Okay, because I see eighteen subject "Consider the Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Fee Schedule Update," right?
I, maybe I'm looking at the wrong agenda, but I see eighteen items and sixteen is perhaps, I don't know if any draft...
Correct.
I'm sorry, when you speak, just announce yourself. Is that City Manager Truup?
Yes, correct, Mayor. This is Jim Truup, City Manager. No, the item sixteen is the recommendation, the agenda item would be the subject as the recommendation for the Parks and Recreation Commission to approve the funds for the community grant funding. That answer the question.
Okay, well, great. Well, instead of trying to glean what document you have, Councilmember Moore, I think a member of staff is probably emailing you the correct special meeting agenda for today.
Okay, thank you. Because I see thirty-five is subject to consider the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission to approve funds for the fund...
I think, I think Councilmember Moore, you're probably looking at our May 16th or May 17th rather agenda. So, yeah, so you'll need to pull the special meeting agenda that was released yesterday.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Kirsten. I did, I did send Councilmember Moore the May 19th amended agenda.
Okay, excellent. So, Councilmember Moore, if you want to take a moment to examine that, but that would, I'll go ahead and read the subject. In full, "Recommendation from Parks and Recreation Commission to Approve Funds in the Amount of $96,460.46 for the Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023. Community Funding Grant Program and Approval Finding, Rather Final Funding Amounts for the Community Funding Program to be Included in the Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023. And that's Continued from May 17, 2022." Councilmember Willie, you have a hand raised? And you'll need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm seeing the same thing as Councilman Moore, that it sounded like from Lauren that there's an amended agenda for tonight. Because the one I'm looking at, you know, says Thursday, May 19th agenda. And number sixteen is, as Councilman Moore said, Park and Rec's Commission to Approve Funds. So I guess I'm saying, Lauren, can you send me the, also the amended one?
Mayor Paul, I just sent all of council the amended agenda.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I'm a little bit unclear on the enumeration here because that is very odd. So John, Kitty, councilmembers, Willie and Moore, where did you pull your agenda? I didn't want to get too much into an exploration of that, but since it's two of you that have the same, did you pull your agenda from the online source or did you pull it from somewhere else?
No, the, the email from Lauren, I can go and pull up that email again that...
Oh, I see. Okay, well, I'm not really sure.
It was, yeah. Yeah, so, okay.
Right, okay. Well, you should have the correct agenda now. And so it is, as I had read it, it's the community funding program, the grant program that we have. And so that's just being requested to move to June 7th. And so if there are objections, Councilmember Moore, you have a hand raised?
Okay, so the, the version that I have is from the Continued and Agenda. It's dated 5/17/2022 online. And I...
Mayor Paul, may I explain what that notice is?
And there is another, there are two. Okay, thank you.
So the, by law, the Clerk's Office is required to send out a notification after an item is continued. And resulting from the meeting on Tuesday, 5/17, there were items that were continued. So the following day, we sent out the notification with all of those items enumerated. And they followed the 5/17 agenda. And so I believe item thirty-five would follow the fee schedule agenda number for the 5/17 agenda.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kirsten. So, so Councilmembers Moore and Willie, you're looking at the continuation notice of those items rather than the notice of the special meeting. So that's a mystery solved. And Councilmember Moore, your hand is still up. Did you have a specific comment on this motion?
Uh, somewhat. So what I've noticed, for some reason, that when I go to the, the online calendar for city council, that I would have expected the 5/19 to be right next to 5/17 when I look at the list, but I have to scroll all the way down to the bottom to find the 5/19 2022 agenda items. So it's not in calendar order. And I noticed this earlier today for another, for, for another committee, that this has happened. And I, and I hope that someone gets to the, the bottom of this because it, these used to fill in in a logical order, but if you pull it up, it's not logical. So that's how I missed it. Thank you. And I'll continue on with the correct agenda because I see the city attorney has got his hand up. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And so Chris is taking his hand down at this point. Vice Mayor Chow, do you have a comment on the motion?
For me, the...
I'm sorry, Chris.
Sorry, sorry, my hand is going to have to go back up. Sorry. So I, I just wanted to remind everybody that this is not a debatable motion. Certainly, there's, there's, there's some flexibility for people to get the correct agenda in front of them, but, but, you know, council should really take a vote on it before further discussion.
Okay, well, great. Thank you, Chris. Vice Mayor, that being the advice of council, did you have something related to the procedural aspect? If not, then I'm just going to call for a vote on this motion here.
Just that, for me, the order is correct, so...
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that input. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote for that motion under postponements and orders of the day?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Could you repeat the motion again?
The motion is to continue item sixteen, Recommendation from Parks and Recreation Commission to Approve Funds in the Amount of $96,460.46 for Fiscal Year 2022, 2023. Community Funding Grant Program and Approval of Final Funds, Funding Amounts for the Community Funding Program to be Included in the Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 to the meeting, the regular meeting of June 7th, 2022.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Aye.
And Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so we are on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar is comprised of items number one through fourteen this evening. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent calendar from the council? Vice Mayor Chow? Your hand is raised. Maybe it's still raised from last time. And if you want to be heard, you'll need to unmute yourself, but I don't see your hand still up. So I'll call in Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so now I need to look at the, the new, the new listing. Yes, so it's, you're trying to move consent item up through fourteen. I'd like to pull item fourteen if I have that correct. So item fourteen is authorizing the Seventh Amendment of Agreement 15-206 between the City of Cupertino and Professional Turf Management. So that's currently on, on consent, and I'd like to pull that item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Would anyone else from council like to pull any of the items on consent? Those are items one through thirteen remaining at this point. I don't see any new hands raised, and so I will go ahead and...
Actually, Mayor Paul, I'm sorry. I would also like to pull item, item ten, the Third Quarter Financial Report.
Okay, Councilmember Moore pulls item ten as well as item fourteen on the consent calendar. I'll go over to members of the public at this time. And so if any member of the public, and I won't time this, but if anyone has a request to move an item off consent, please raise your hand and we'll, we'll consider the request. So I don't see the hand raised. May I have a motion from council to move consent items one through twelve as well as, I'm sorry, one through nine as well as eleven, twelve and thirteen? Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I moved to, do one through nine and eleven through thirteen.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Willie's motion? And Councilmember Way?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. I don't see further hands raised. Again, this motion is to move consent items one through nine and eleven, twelve and thirteen as recommended in the agenda. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Item number ten, the subject is to consider accepting the Third Quarter Financial Report for the Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022. That's January 1st through March 31st of this year. Consider adopting Resolution 22-059, Approving Budget Modification Number 2122-198, Increasing Appropriations by $529,935 and Revenues by $9,448,487, which was continued from this past Tuesday's regular meeting of May 17th. And so I take it that somebody from, actually, why don't we do this? Councilmember Moore, since you pulled this item off consent, would you like to give a brief summary as to the reason that you pulled this from consent?
Certainly, Mayor Paul. We have about $10 million being modified in our budget, and we should have a presentation to explain it. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. And so with that guidance, our financial team, I, I do see a hand raised from our city manager. Jim, did you want to speak on this before we brought this over to the Finance Department?
Oh, no, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to introduce Christina Alfaro, our Director of Admin Services. And I don't have my picture on right now tonight. I'm a really bad Wi-Fi, so I'm like cutting in and out, listening to all you people. So I'm trying to minimize my issues here.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thanks for joining us, Jim. I know you're on vacation and hopefully everything in the East Coast goes well. All right, well, welcome, Director Alfaro.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm actually going to send this over to Thomas Leung, who prepared a short presentation on the third quarter report.
Okay, great. Thanks, Christina. Welcome, Thomas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today, I'll be going through the third quarter adjustments. In community development, staff is requesting expenditure and revenue adjustment for on-call special projects and canyon crossing plan review consultant. Both of these requests also have offsetting revenue as well as administrative fees attached. This is a project requested by Public Works for the Parks and Recreation Department to replace the Blackberry Farm Golf Course netting. And then we also have two transfers, transferring funds to the CIP program. And these are requests to council because we are transferring funds between general fund and the capital improvement program fund. And then on this slide, we have a variety of projects requested by Public Works, including ball field fencing, Veterans Memorial maintenance, emergency elevator repair in City Hall, a lobby monitor electrical, janitorial and security services, Wilson Park tree maintenance, and then the two transfers to the CIP program. And then in non-departmental, again, we see the transfers, but what I'll focus on is a sales tax estimate increase of $9 million. And so the city is projecting an increase to its sales taxes. So the current city has currently received $33 million, which is already more than what was budgeted. And so staff is recommending to increase the revenues appropriation to 36 million, so an increase of $9 million. And this is in line with projections from our sales tax consultant, HDL. And with that, we move on to the recommendation, which is to consider accepting the city manager's third quarter financial report and also to adopt a resolution increasing appropriations by $529,000 and revenues by 9.5 million. And now I look forward to your questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Thomas. I'll go over to members of the public with any comments at this time. So I'll remind the members of the public that you'll have three minutes to make your comments. We'll go from the order of Zoom, and then anyone on the phone, you can press star nine on your, on your phone to be, to raise your hand. And then during the time that the first person is speaking, as with all comments, you can email your comment to cityclerk@cupidino.org. And up to three minutes of that email will be read to the record by the city clerk. So at this time, I don't see anybody with their hand raised, and so I will move this back for item ten to council. We do have a hand raised from Councilmember Moore, and so why don't you start us off with item ten?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Thank you, Thomas, for the, for the report. And I believe what you're saying is that the, the sales tax revenue increased by 9 million essentially? Is that just for the quarter or compared to what was expected? Could you explain a little bit more about that? And then I, one other question was, I recall the, the Veterans Memorial, original price for the improvement was 15,000, and now we're at $20,000. So I was wondering if you, if you would happen to know anything about why the, why the increase on that? Thank you.
So I answered the question related to sales tax. And so in fiscal year 2021, the city saw significant increases in its sales tax revenues, and this was due to increases in online sales as well as business-to-business technology purchases. And both of those also caused the city's pool allocations to increase as well. And so the city received approximately 40 to 41 million in sales tax revenues in fiscal year 2021. But the city expected that to be a one-time experience due to the pandemic. And so for fiscal year 22, the city forecasted revenues of $27 million. But as a third quarter, so as of March 2022, the city has already received 33 million, which is approximately 6 million over what was originally budgeted. And then with one more quarter remaining in the year, the city expects to receive approximately 36 million this fiscal year. And so that is the reason for the increase. And I'll also note that the city does budget sales tax extremely conservatively, and that is because of the concentration of the city's sales tax revenue.
Wonderful. Thank you, Thomas. And did you happen to know about the 15,000 for the memorial going, increasing to $20,000 for the repairs?
So I would, I'm not currently familiar with that, with the exact, I guess, increase in that project.
Okay, no problem. I can ask that internally. But thank you very much. I'm, my questions are completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. We'll go to Vice Mayor Chow next.
Hi, so I, it is mentioned that HDL, our consultant HDL, has some projection that agrees with what we see here. I'm curious what kind of document or projection HDL provides to, to the city. I wonder if we can get that document?
So HDL reviews the city's sales taxes on a quarterly basis and provides us historical data as well as projections for the next approximately five years. And then this data is also provided by industry group. But because they are showing us numbers by industry group, that data is currently confidential. Because due to the concentration of taxpayers and business to industry group, exact numbers for that group are confidential. But we can look into providing general information, so sort of like a high-level forecast.
But I believe this can still be shared with council members confidentially, right?
Yes, that could be done, similar to confidential briefings.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. And we have a hand raised from our city manager, Jim. So Jim, do you want to make a comment?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm just, I'm coming back to my Wi-Fi issues. I'm trying to click it off, and it doesn't seem to go off until...
Oh, okay. It wasn't on, I guess it was, yeah. I know how that can be kind of misleading sometimes. Are you on your phone or are you on...
Yeah, my apologies.
Oh, no worries, no worries. Okay, so I see, Vice Mayor, your hand is still raised. Did you have any follow-ups at this time or are you ready to? Okay, great. So may I have a motion on item ten? The recommended action, I'll remind everyone, is first to accept the city manager's third quarter financial report for fiscal '21 to '22, and second to adopt Resolution 22-059, Improving the Budget Modification Number 2122-198, Increasing Appropriations by $529,935 and Revenues by $9,448,487. And I see Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised, as well as Vice Mayor Chow. So Councilmember Moore, would you like to make that motion?
Certainly so moved.
Vice Mayor Chow, would you like to second?
I'll happily do a second, but I want to add to my request because the data, for sales data, probably is different before the pandemic. If, if possible, I would like to get documents from 2015 to now, if that's not too much trouble to pull those together.
Are you looking for historical, actual?
The document from HDL, their, their report. I'm interested in their historical analysis and projection. I think it will be interesting to compare their projection versus actual. So multiple-year document from there will be helpful. Thank you.
We can work with them to provide that.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And, okay, so I think that's the last hand that's raised. I'll just make a couple of comments on this. You know, I, I think it is very important for us to realize that we're in a very specified economy here. I've heard in the past that we are pretty leveraged on one particular entity. And, you know, I've heard analogies as to, you know, company town sort of thing. I've never really agreed with that. I mean, I think we're in an ecosystem, certainly, and Cupertino is a fairly, fairly unique community in a lot of ways. And so, I mean, for me, if you take the company town analogy, and it's always been my perspective since I, you know, started not just on council before then, it's not really a company town in the sense of the 1800s. It's really, if you're taking all company towns, you know, west or east of Mississippi, that would be pretty much, you know, the fiscal impact. And of course, it comes with a certain ecosystem as well. You know, one thing I will say is that over time, you know, there was a deal inked in the 90s that gave Cupertino a little bit less than they're entitled to on this business-to-business tax. And during the entitlements of Apple Park, that actually was raised, depending on how you describe it, by 30% or 15%, from 50 cents on the dollar to 65 cents on the dollar. So we're actually getting 65% of what we, what we could be getting. And it's just been an ongoing, you know, conversation. The final point that I'll make is that, you know, I, I think the best way to steward your money, and I think everyone knows this intuitively around here, although I guess the point often gets lost when, you know, people look in from the outside, is basically to spend your dollar wisely. And so, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's nice to see this, but, I mean, I'm not particularly surprised. People are buying more devices, you know, there will be more business-to-business kind of things. But I, I think at the end, you know, we should just really kind of take this with a grain of salt and, you know, keep doing what we're doing and be very thoughtful about how we, you know, set forth our, our expenditure dollar and, you know, how we approach this as well. So those are my, my thoughts on this. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised at this point?
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, thank you for mentioning the 65% sales tax reduction, now reduction, 35% reduction. And I remember I requested a document on exactly what's the condition of this reduction. Can, can we get that? Because I keep hearing about that, but I'm not sure what's the circumstances under which this was granted. And then it's indefinitely, so yes, it'll be great to know that in writing. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. And so seeing no further hands raised, Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on item ten?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye, yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Item fourteen is to consider authorizing a Seventh Amendment of Agreement 15-206 between the City of Cupertino and Professional Turf Management. That's a proper noun, Professional Turf Management, extending the contract for six months and resulting in $102,600 in maintenance-related expenses for fiscal '22 to '23, which was continued from May 17th, 2022. This sounds like a Public Works item to me, but it might be Recreation and Community Services. Director McGreevy, you have your camera on. Is this in fact something from your department?
It is. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, great. So let me go to Councilmember Moore first to make a brief comment on the reason for pulling this item off consent. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So perhaps if we could have the, the Seventh Amendment to the agreement pulled up by a member of staff, that might help, along with the expenditure distribution. And just while that's being located, so how this, this contract began in December 3rd, 2015, and then on June 22nd, 2016, there was the First Amendment to the, to that contract. And then the following June in 2017, there was a Second Amendment. And then again in 2018, Third Amendment. And then again in 2018, Third Amendment, Fourth Amendment. So these were annual amendments. So the first contract was only for actually a six-month period. And then subsequently, they were one-year-long amendments. And this current amendment is asking for, I believe, it'd be again a six-month period, taking us to December 31. And at issue with this is that the original contract was only for half a year. But really, after that, the amendments were all for annual contracts. So and the amount is two hundred and five thousand two hundred. If you scroll to the expenditure distribution on the third page of this document, which you have pulled up. So you can see when the amendments happened. And then you have the expenditure distribution of two hundred and five thousand. Now, when I look at the purchasing policy for the City of Cupertino, it seems to me that this should go out or should have gone out to bid at some point. This, I, and the city attorney can correct me, but I think this falls under General Services, Operating or Maintenance Services, and the category is greater than one hundred and seventy-five thousand. We're looking at two hundred and five. And the process says Formal Competitive Bidding or RFP with Approval from the City Manager. And the Authorization Form Authorized by the Department Head, Contract Approved by City Manager and City Council. So to me, this should go, should have gone out to bid at some point. And I think at this point, I would like to understand why it didn't go out to bid over this period of time. And I think that as a policy, continuing to amend a contract, this is now the seventh year we're on this, seems kind of questionable. If they are the best service provider of this service for us, then the bid process should reflect that and they will be awarded the contract. But my concern is that we have just simply been approving these amendments year over year over year. We're now into seven of them. It's over the amount that I understand in the purchasing policy we're supposed to be having avoid the bid process. So that's the sum of my issues.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. That was a very clear recitation of the reason that the items pulled. So let me refer this, you know, for the purposes of effectively having a presentation to the city attorney as well as Director McGreevy. And then just to signpost it, I'll then open it up to the members of the public that would like to speak on it and then bring him back to City Council. And so Chris or Joanne, did you want to speak to some of the comments raised by Councilmember Moore on this?
Sure, I'm happy. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
And, okay, City Attorney Jensen, you wanted to...
Yeah, so I will let Joanne take the lead and I will follow up with any legal clarifications that are necessary and, of course, him available to answer questions.
Okay, sounds good, very polite. So Director McGreevy, all the back of your court.
Sorry about that. Yes, I'm happy to speak to why this RFP has not gone out as of yet. And that's for a couple of different reasons. Certainly best practices, we definitely want to get the RFP issued and out for bids for this maintenance and soil testing out at the golf course due to staff vacancies and turnover as well as other council priorities that we've had to manage this year. We just were not able to get this done in a timely fashion. And the contract will be expiring at the end of June. And because we're not going to get to the finish line in time to go through all the steps required to issue and start a new contract, we needed to extend this.
Okay, thank you, Director McGreevy. And Chris, did you have any follow-ups to that before I move this to members of the public?
Yeah, no, I would just add that under the purchasing ordinance, that applies to these kind of purchases. You know, this kind of purchase would be allowed because it is necessary for the continued operation of the department while the RFP is being finalized. So, you know, that is why the amendment is being brought back at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Moore, we'll go back to you after we hear from members of the public. Okay, so I don't see any hands raised, but I'll go through my regular recitation. For any members of the public, you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll need to raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine to raise your hand in Zoom if you're on the phone by the time that the first member of the public is done speaking. And then if you're listening to this, I guess on the City Channel or on YouTube, you can also email cityclerk@cupertino.org during the time the first person is speaking. And up to three minutes of your email will be read into the record during the public comment time for this item. So seeing no hands raised from the public, I'll go back to Councilmember Moore, followed by Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore, follow-ons to this item number 14?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. One, I think that it would probably be very beneficial if the purchasing policy would be given to each member of City Council. And to whomever pulled up the expenditure distribution table, if you would please pull that back up again, that would help.
That was me, so I'll go ahead and share my screen again here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul.
Sure. I think I moved it back up to the beginning of the...
So page three, yeah, page three then. So first, I think what's important on this page is that, the first page was that it was a six-month contract. I have a problem with having contracts started and done as a six-month period like this when you know or have some expectation that it's going to be a full year long because it ends up looking like it's underneath the contract limit, of which, and I understand there is some discrepancy between the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the purchasing policy. And apparently, there might be some other number within the municipal code that's different. But the problem I have with that is that it looks like it's below the limit to start. But then when we get to Amendment One, it seems to me, and maybe, you know, the city attorney can correct me on this, but it seems to me when they arrived at the one year, or actually it was done at the six-month period, when they arrived at that time, they went over two hundred thousand dollars. And I need to understand if that triggered the need for an RFP back in 2016. So here we are, seven years into this, and now we're talking about an RFP. But it seems to me that that needed to have happened when they drafted Amendment One. Also, I would like to see what the actual Exhibit A is for the services and what's changed in seven years. And also, why is it still two hundred and five thousand two hundred after all this time? No changes, nothing is different after this many years. I find that quite hard to believe. So if Chris could answer, what triggers this need for an RFP? What's different after year seven than year one? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. City Attorney Jensen?
Yeah, so if there's a multi-year contract that would trigger, you know, different levels of review and different processes under the purchasing policy, then, you know, certainly, you know, one of the things that we look at in our contract review process is whether, you know, that contract is being, you know, improperly segmented to avoid, you know, either council approval and/or a competitive bidding process. So I can't speak to what was done, you know, seven years ago, but that's the process that's in place now. And, you know, and here, you know, there is an amendment. But the reason that we're not going through the competitive bidding process is not because the amendment is less than the competitive bidding threshold, but rather, these are ongoing costs that are necessary for the operation of the Parks and Recs Recreation Department and the maintenance of city property. And that RFP process is underway. And that's consistent with the recommendations that our office makes at this time.
Through the mayor, so let's say it was Amendment Number Four. So sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, in 2019, should that have gone out for an RFP? We know that the grass is going to keep growing. We know that we're going to need a multi-year contract. Should we have done an RFP back in 2019?
Yeah, so I don't know enough about the circumstances of that contract adoption in 2019 to evaluate that now. I mean, I can tell you now that Parks and Recreation is pursuing an RFP. But they, and, you know, as well as the City Attorney's Office is recommending approval of this contract at this time to allow for six more months for Park Maintenance to continue while that document is finalized.
Okay, may I ask, and maybe this is a question for the city manager or assistant city manager, how long does it ordinarily take to have an RFP circulated and have the bids come in and select another service provider or the same service provider? I'm thinking that we don't need to extend for six months. We can extend for a three-month period instead and have staff go through the evaluation period and form a new contract then. And there might be things that need to change. So I'm a little dismayed that I didn't see Exhibit A. If someone can forward that to me, I'd like to know what the actual contract has been for. And has there been no changes in that contract in seven years?
Okay, Jim, and let's go back to Chris after that.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Moore. Excuse me, the, I don't want to say a reason, but, because most of us weren't here at that time. But trying to get an RFP done does take some time. I know during the pandemic, the recreation staff was narrowed down considerably to just a few people. And that precluded them from doing others as they were also taking on many other jobs that the other staff that were no longer there were doing. And that's when they got back, not quite the full staff, but that's when they've been getting back the staff. The RFP process did take up and get going. Depending on the size of the project and what it takes will vary from RFP to RFP. Why six months? Three months is usually too short for most anything, just because of the timing on getting RFPs or documentation, getting it to council, getting something approved. That usually takes more than just a three-month period of time. So that's why we do that. Doesn't mean it has to go six months. If we can get it done before then, we can. But I don't know, I don't know about the past history on it, but that's usually what happens. And Joanne, I don't know if you had any other information?
No, I would just add on to that, you know, we're hoping to bring a contract awarded in, you know, September or October. But we like to buffer in a little bit of time, especially, it's just been really hard to gauge COVID and people being out sick. There keeps being these waves. And so I think that, you know, sometimes we don't buffer in enough time. And so we just wanted to do that in this case.
Okay, and Chris, did you have something on this point as well? Your hand is raised.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that was inadvertent, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, first, I agree that we should have the purchasing ordinance ready in easy access. But I think not only this council needs to know it, the public and the future council members also should need to have access. So I would recommend that we include a link to existing policies like this in the staff report, perhaps adding a section called Policy Compliance that includes links to the corresponding policies and how this agreement complies with the policy. And as we find out now, this item does not quite comply and there are justifications for that. And those justifications should be stated under the Policy Compliance section so that we don't have to continue to ask the same question each time. I would prefer that the staff report is amended with the stated reasons for transparency.
Yeah, no, Vice Mayor Chow, thanks. Did anyone from staff want to follow on on that? I guess essentially it was a reiteration of the concern. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me get with staff. I don't think there should be any issue, you know, for links in to the different policies. I just have to verify that first. But it's not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue, but I'll have to check and see first. But that is something we can look into.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks, Jim. And before I call back on you, Councilmember Moore, let me check in. Councilmember Way, Councilmember Willie, did you have any thoughts on this item? Or did you, I have just one brief thought to share before...
Yeah. I think the only one I would offer is it, well, two small comments. So I'm okay with extending, you know, a contract at, you know, an important time to be sure continuous services with the understanding that, you know, it will be corrected going forward. And then the other comment would just be that when we have continued contracts coming up for renewal, if it's not going to be a yearly double-check, you know, periodically, you know, has anything changed? Maybe we're doing less turf with the drought. Maybe, I mean, if we're doing less watering, then maybe there's less maintenance needing to be done. But we don't know that if the same contract is being reproduced. So I do think those two things should help us spend the tax dollars as wisely as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Way?
So my comment is, you know, coming from a Fremont Union High School district, eleven years of maintaining five school sites plus the district office plus adult school. There are a lot of maintenance things to do. And I totally, I think, our city also has it. So I think staff with their time constraint and their capabilities might have chosen to continue some contract that looks really good and keep it going and then, you know, find the right time to do a RFP review it. So I will leave that to the staff and the city manager's discretion. And of course, a notice to the council is good, but I can see this is a contract that meets the minimum. I'm not saying that we should not go for an RFP or be evaluated, but, you know, the staff probably has to pick and choose what, how they put their time and effort into doing what. So that's what my understanding from the staff report and the inquiries. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Councilmember Way. Yeah, my comment, I'm just trying to square this with how Blackberry Farm corridor has been kind of evaluated over the years. So this one started at the end of 2015, I think. And now that it's in the Seventh Amendment, it tells me that this has been a year-by-year process. And I'm just trying to search my memory for what we've done in terms of evaluating the corridor. It's actually been a fairly significant generator of activity within our Recreation and Community Services Department, that particular quarter. There was a fairly significant master plan that we ended up morphing into, a citywide master plan for Parks and Recreation. And then every now and then you do hear about irrigation. You hear about, you know, the water costs. But I'm not really sure how that would jive with how this has been a maintenance contract that's been prolonged on an annual basis. I mean, I hear what Councilmember Way is saying, but I think that there are larger considerations here in terms of adherence to policy. I mean, if we're talking six or seven years, then, you know, to the extent that we could have anticipated this, you know, it could have been RFPed out for a multi-year contract, for instance, which might even give us some cost savings, I don't know. But we won't know right now, right? Because, you know, we didn't have that opportunity to consider it. So, you know, not trying to second-guess procedure or, you know, get into the so-called dichotomy between policy and operations. But we do have a policy. And, you know, I don't know whether it's really that satisfying to hear that the RFP is, you know, going out and we have personnel issues. know, the RFP is, you know, going out and we have personnel issues. Because, you know, personnel issues are relatively recent. They're certainly not seven years in terms of, you know, kind of like community and society-wide impacts or anything like that. So, yeah, and if there's some kind of connection between how the corridor has been evaluated over time and looked at over time and how this has been kind of set forth on an annual basis, I mean, I'd be happy to to hear it from staff. Maybe I'm missing something, you know, maybe the uncertainty or something has kind of like, you know, dragged along in in something of a tenuous manner over time or something. I I don't know. But but to me, it sounds like there's there's either that going on or it's simply a matter of, hey, we hit at the end of the year and let's just go ahead. Maybe the first one or two times it seemed pretty much, you know, not certain, but then after three or four or five or now six and then seven times, it just seems as a matter of course. And, you know, I I do tend to agree that at some point, you know, earlier than this, we should be leaning on our policy to see whether there are larger points to preserve here in terms of, you know, why we go out to bid for this kind of thing with a threshold amount that's very clearly over one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Councilmember Moore, oh, and Jim, you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak to, you know, some of those slides?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to state that, you know, we had the different changeover in the different department heads. And Joanne came in right in the pandemic, you know, and we had, you know, the reduction in staff. So trying to look backwards is why wasn't it done in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen? Those are nobody's here at that time, but when Joanne came on, this was something on her list, and she's moving forward with it now that she was able to hire staff back on. So I think the the idea is to get it in. We all want to get it up and done and ready and make sure we're in compliance with all the different policies. So it is a it's a looking forward, it's moving forward. The past were for people that had been here that are no longer with the city is is what had happened.
Yeah, that's a fair point. And I'm certainly I I don't want to get the sense that I'm trying to, you know, throw anyone under the bus, either, you know, current or or in the past. It's just trying to trying to figure out, you know, how did it get from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two on an annual basis extensions of? Yeah, I mean, I I get the last couple of years, right? I mean, you know, Joanne was was transitioning in and, you know, unfortunately, Joanne, you you won't have like a really normal time, you know, during your cusp of your stint at, you know, Parks and Recreation, Recreation and Community Services Director. But, you know, I think we've done a lot of a lot of positive things. You know, in in terms of trying to move this forward, it does sound like it's going out to an RFP. And so, you know, maybe maybe this discussion is sufficient. I I don't necessarily see what's gained by kind of kind of putting this on a hiatus. I mean, certainly, you can't argue that the current vendor doesn't have experience, you know, under this contract. Let's go back to Councilmember Moore and then Vice Mayor Chow with her hands raised. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I I actually do personally want to see this item come back. When I go to the the actual budget for Blackberry Farm Golf Course, and I do think that your initial question, Mayor Paul, was 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 actually pretty, pretty interestingly spot-on when you asked if it was going to be a Public Works presentation. When I go to the budget, Blackberry Farm Golf Course, the proposed budget states on page three fifty-seven, the overall decrease is due to the reduction in materials as a result of the reallocation of maintenance costs to Public Works under the account five sixty eighty-seven two sixty. I look at the that item, Budget Unit five sixty eighty-seven two sixty. It only has a contract services amount of twenty-four thousand, which wouldn't cover this at all. So, you know, as we move on to budget, that's going to have to be addressed. But we don't have a copy, to my knowledge, in our agenda packet of the actual contract, which we are allegedly going to be approving. So as for me, I can't vote in favor of this item. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's a fair enough procedural basis, right? I mean, to get the underlying contract out there, not just for us, but the public as well. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised. I don't see any hands raised from staff.
So thank you very much for getting this done in a timely manner for this under all the challenges. I know that we really need this, but I also want to find out how in the future we can improve that. So we are extending the contract for six months only, not one year this time. And I understand it takes at least six, three months to do the RFP. So if what would be the ideal time? How many months we need to do an RFP?
So our department is not actually, you know, doing this alone. We're collaborating with Public Works on this item. And so we're anticipating and we have been collaborating with the city attorney's office as well as Public Works to refine the scope. And we will be doing pre-bid walkthroughs as well as analyzing the submittals, and that's a team effort. Sometimes that's hard to organize when you're not just one department and you're prioritizing different things. So we're anticipating it will take three to four months, and we're just buffering in another month or two, just in case there are any hiccups timing-wise. And I see that Michael has raised his hand, and so I will defer any other information to him.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Joanne. And Mr. Wu, what's your what's your comment?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So as I'm listening to this, and I fully understand, you look at documents where there seems to be multiple amendments each year, but I just want to note that I believe that this contract from the from the inception contemplated a multi-year contract, in fact, a five-year, multi-year contract. And so, you know, that's that's actually is intended to provide maximum flexibility for the city to evaluate the services before they move on to the next year. So versus a a five-year contract from the get-go, it was a five-year contract with essentially, you know, four subsequent option years, which was sort of what was done here. And of course, as that described in the last couple of years, we encountered some staff difficulties and and so therefore required the Sixth and and now a Seventh Amendment. But to explain, it 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 started off as a multi-year contract, and although it seems like, you know, it was extended every year, that it really was contemplated from the beginning.
Yeah, that's fair enough. So, okay, let's go back to Vice Mayor Chow.
So we are extending for six.
More as a hand raised as well. Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, so we're extending for six months now because we anticipate to do an RFP, which we are planning to do, and that that will give us time to complete that in six months. And at that time, it will be a multi-year contract, likely amending every year, but then it will be with understanding of multi-year. So we can maybe negotiate a better price, a better bid, probably likely. Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. You know, I I will say, you know, at the at the at the beginning of the pandemic year in June twenty twenty, or at least through through this period of time for the city discretion extensions, I, you know, I I don't want to kind of look back with hindsight, you know, being twenty twenty, but, you know, I I'm not a hundred percent certain whether it would have been all that inclusive at that point. I mean, I think, given the fact that we were able to hold on to all of our full-time staffers through really good fiscal decisions in the last three or four years, I I mean, I just I I I don't mean to push back, you know, disrespectfully, but, I mean, I think in terms of the turnover of staffing, if we're looking at it a couple of years ago almost now, I mean, I think probably, but I I know a lot of things were going on, of course. We all have that memory of, you know, how to how to balance out the various programmatic elements. Okay, well, you know, just before I go to Councilmember Moore, I I mean, I will say, just in the interest of efficacy, I'm not really sure what would necessarily change a whole lot if we brought this back. So I'm I am kind of leaning towards the staff recommendation on this. But, I mean, I I understand what the point, you know, being brought up here is just in terms of, you know, making sure that we're evaluating this in in due time and consistent with our policies. But Councilmember Moore, your your hand is raised as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. And and I really appreciate what Michael is adding to this discussion. However, we don't have that the contract that he's referencing, that that if it was a five-year contract originally, I I'm unaware of it, and and I still don't have any idea what what's what's in the contract. So I I have problems with approving that. And I and I don't see, given that we have a few meetings before before the expiration of this particular amendment, I I think we can wait to have some supplemental materials so that we fully understand it and have the council staff report, city council staff report adjusted to provide the information that we brought up now. And it should also, in my opinion, be reflective of the procurement policy very transparently so that we understand at what point there should have been an RFP going out so that we are are, you know, better stewards of the the taxpayer money. And this this situation where we've seen contracts amended and amended and amended has has come up before, and we haven't gotten really clear guidance on what what the proper procedure is. And and I would like to see this the staff report come back explaining explaining that, even if it even if it isn't reflecting well. I'd like to hear it so that we we understand clearly and so that we can make sure that things are done according to the process moving forward. And then, and I see that the director of Public Works is on. So according to the budget, this this is moved into Public Works Department for the for the next fiscal year. So I think that that's that will end up being under under Matt Morley now, the the maintenance part of Blackberry Farm. And I think that it's so I hope that that works out, having having that switch, but I'm not not sure about it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Director Morley, we'll go to you before we go to Councilmember White.
Thank you. And just to add a little bit of clarification, so the the budget reference that Councilmember Moore has identified is for the facilities maintenance element of Blackberry Farm, not for the turf maintenance. So it's a little a little bit different element, turf maintenance. That contract remains with with the Parks and Rec Department. For specific to a couple, so just wanted to separate the two conversations that we're having here. One is about what happened in the past, what we've what we've dealt with. I think there's probably some some learning experiences we could have there. We've had a lot of transition, as I've seen in my time here. And so perhaps exploring what the the challenges were is going to be beneficial so that we don't make any missteps that might have been made again. But really, what we need to do here is move this one forward. The contract does expire. We need we need to be able to mow the turf at Blackberry Farm. That that's really just what it comes down to as as the the fact in front of us. And, you know, a golf course without mowed turf is not no longer a golf course. So if we could if we could focus on that and then with the understanding that we need to to look at the at the history of that, and perhaps we can provide a quick summary of that in a in a council memo at a future time. With respect to the timeline on an RFP, six months is is really what you need on an RFP. It takes between getting getting a contract executed, working back and forth with with the contractor, getting insurance in place, having them staff up, assuming that that you're going to have a new contractor and new 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 folks, new equipment with lead times on equipment, all of that has to come into account in playing playing out an RFP. Six months is is definitely not too much time for for putting something in place. Thank you for the opportunity to explain.
Okay, thank you, Director Morley. I don't see the hand raised from Councilmember White anymore. So did you want to speak, Councilmember White?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. I was going to let Director Morley explain it first. Coming again, coming from experience, actually, this is a very good contract with if it's a five-year contract with review, it's a really good contract because then you don't go out to forbid every year. And I I know that it wasn't explained directly to our council members, so maybe need a more explanation. But I would really appreciate if we have questions asked ahead of time. Right now, we could have the contract in front of us and approve this motion because as Director Morley said, time is of essence. A lot of service in the city cannot wait. And I do appreciate we need to understand the process, but we have a very experienced city attorney, you know, office right now, and they are very experts in contract. And also, we have, you know, our staff is very experienced. So I really appreciate we can move this forward as Director Morley says, and then, yes, review the process, make sure we understand it. But, you know, anything ahead of time so we can resolve it right now, I would really appreciate that because, you know, personally, I just don't think we need to come back over and over again, doing these things, you know, efficiency is of essence, too. So I would just really appreciate if we have questions asked ahead of time so we can all have it right now and then move forward.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember White. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to continue further discussion at this time. I do have two hands raised, one from Vice Mayor and one from Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion that you'd be willing to forward at this time?
I have a motion that I have written up, but first I want to get understand the timeline a little bit. So if we continue this to June fourth, that would be too late to to for this contract. Is that right?
I think you mean June seventh, right?
June oh seventh, yeah. That would be too late, right? So.
This contract expires, this current extension expires on June thirtieth, so.
So would that be too late to approve this contract, this amendment? We will approve, we would just need more information.
Okay, I've got a hand raised from the city manager. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I just, you know, my comment would be that to push something to that close of a date just gets worrisome. We don't know what what might happen in between, and I would just recommend the approval. We can come back, as Matt said, our direct Public Works Director, with a follow-up memos and any other information that's necessary.
Okay, so then here's my motion. So I would like to move to approve the staff recommendation and bring it back with overgings of the contract for transparency on June seventh, just so we know. And then I want to make sure this gets in the minute that for all future items with contracts and agreements, the staff report shall include a policy compliance section with links responding policies. In addition to the sustainability impact and fiscal impact sections, and justifications should be given in case of any adjustment for any reason. Oh, so on the seventh, I'd like the staff report to come back with this amended section.
Well, I think so, two things, Vice Mayor Chow. It sounds like you want an information item on the June seventh meeting with regard to the contracts. And then for the second part of your motion, I'm not sure we're properly noticed to to direct that, but I think we could potentially give this as a reference to staff to something to our agenda in the future related to this. But let me let me check in with Chris. Our city attorney has a hand raised. Chris, did you want to make a comment on this motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so with respect to the the future contracts and agreements, I agree that that that's not agendized for action today. If council wishes to move in that direction, I think, you know, you could, at first, I guess I would recommend, you know, discussing it with the city manager and then possibly, you know, putting it on a future agenda if you think that's necessary.
Yeah, I I think it's probably a good idea to leave it to June seventh so that we can get back to our council additions of items. So Vice Mayor, table.
This will be my motion then.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
Only for this item.
Exactly, so table stuff under your double lines for perhaps June seventh, then the regular meeting. And I I realize that you're asking for an information item to include an amended staff report, I guess, as part of the information item. So so your motion here is moving the recommended action, but you want material to come back to us at a future meeting. And so let me check in with our city attorney. Would it be would it be okay to actually kind of take that portion of what Vice Mayor Chow was looking at as a kind of future practice for similar? Chow was looking at as a kind of future practice for similar types of items, but not this particular one, and incorporate it into a request to amend this current staff report in accordance to that, you know, kind of desire to understand policy compliance? So so, Chris, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, so so with respect to the the part that's labeled motion now, I think, you know, that, you know, that that would be appropriate to come back as an as an informational item as part of a future agenda designated as June 7th here. With respect to the the second part, again, I mean, I would, you know, recommend, you know, for, you know, perhaps in the first instance that the city manager look at this and then if if there does, if 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 we or or any council member do feel like, or you or any two council members feel like there's a need for council discussion, then then we could certainly agendize that.
All righty, so I have a motion on the table here. It is as as written, I assume, by Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, did you want to recite your full motion?
Okay.
Now that you've had a chance to...
Yeah. So I move to approve this staff recommendation and bring the item back as the informational item in the next council meeting, the June 7th, with overgings of the contracts for transparency. We don't need that. And amend the staff report to include a policy compliance section with links to corresponding policies in addition to the sustainability impact and fiscal impact sections. Justifications should be given for...
For not following policy?
Well...
Just for not...
Why we need this six month, six month extension for going out for an RFP. Yep, does that make sense?
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Chris, you have your hand up. Did you want to speak to this from a legal perspective? And you'll need to unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I I think rather than directing staff to amend the staff report, I would recommend that the motion just, you know, direct staff to 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 provide council updates on that item, those items, excuse me.
Okay, provide a council update to include...
So I get to, so direct staff to provide information on policy compliance, links to, I always get links to applicable policies, and and justification for why the six-month extension is needed.
Okay, so direct staff...
And...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, direct staff to provide information on policy compliance with links to corresponding policies and provide justifications for why, on why a six-month extension is needed.
I think that that's, yeah, that that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All right, let me go to council to see if there is a second for this motion. Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised. Would you like to second this motion?
Yes, I'd like to second it and make a comment just to to reiterate the fact that we have not seen Exhibit A. I went online to city records today trying to find Exhibit A on this contract. I did find the Sixth Amendment to the agreement. Again, I couldn't see Exhibit A in there. And so the the Assistant City Attorney apparently had, does have a copy of that. I think even before we have the next meeting, we should probably be be given that. And with regards to city records, I'd like to understand why it was unavailable. And and that's it. And and I hope that when this comes back, that we have, that we are educated on on how the process moving forward should should progress because we see these multi-year contracts in in several areas where the dollar amount ends up being over what the purchasing policy is showing. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Moore. I do see hands raised from our city attorney as well as Vice Mayor.
Oh.
Are you both still wanting to speak? Chris, your hands down as well as...
No.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on item number 14?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thanks very much. So it's about 6:46. We can come back in about five minutes at 6:52 to start our continued study session on the proposed budget. That's item 15. To give some idea of time after that, we have a couple of hearings, one on the fee schedule updates on item 17 and then our ordinances and action items, I should correct myself, just one public hearing. Item 18 is the consideration of mini-code amendments for the Economic Development Committee. So I I did say budget will allocate about an hour, so I'm hoping to wrap that up by 8 o'clock. And then the other couple of items, I don't anticipate that we should be able to, you know, have to spend more than an hour each. So I I'm hoping with 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 brief breaks as needed. If we go over an hour for any particular item, we can wrap this by 10. So, okay, we'll see you at 6:52. Thanks. It's a continued study session now. This is item 15. That was continued from our regular meeting on Tuesday, May 17th, two days ago. And so the subject is the initial, excuse me, initial study session on fiscal year '22 to '23, our proposed budget. And if someone wants to remind me where we left this off, I don't have a specific recollection on, I think it was the Vice Mayor, actually. So Vice Mayor Chow, you did want to leave us with a thought before we concluded the item on Tuesday night. If you don't have that recollection right now, then I will go ahead and just open it up for further discussion. I'll remind everyone that we did receive the staff report. We've heard from our public. And at this point, it really is a matter of further clarifications as well as some feedback and input to staff as they go and proceed with the next step of preparing our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So I I don't see any hands raised at this point. And so I'll go ahead and ask, I ask our staff to perhaps make some feedback and comment on, I I had a couple of items, but actually, Councilmember Moore has a hand raised at this time. So we'll call on Councilmember Moore first. So, Councilmember...
Okay, thank you. So kind of continuing on with the with regards to the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, it would be helpful because it's sounding as though that the maintenance contract is remaining within the Parks and Rec Department and that some of the maintenance is moving to Public Works. So I need some more text around what's remaining in the the Parks and Rec component versus what is moved, what has moved into into the Blackberry Farm golf maintenance. So the budget units 560-63616 is the the portion of Blackberry Farm that's in Parks and Rec. And then under Public Works, it's budget unit 56087-260. One of the things under under Public Works, which I was looking at, was the fixed assets acquisition. And and I and I have requested a list of the the vehicles which the city owns, of which there are 107 vehicles. And this year's budget is asking, requesting $676,000. The previous year's budget, the adopted budget shows it was $1,001,017. So that was the 2022 adopted budget, but the previous year, the 2021 actual, is showing $9,022 only. And then the 2020 actual has a has a dash. And I think those, I would like those to be reviewed because the vehicle listings that I have show that in 2021, we purchased vehicles and in 2020, we purchased several vehicles also in 2019. So I think that the dashes should probably go away. And then there is a, in the special revenue funds page, there is something, let's see, I thought, yes, there's vehicle internal service funds. I don't quite understand this. We have something called the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, and I need to understand if that has anything to do with these vehicle purchases or not. And then I'm also wondering, what happens when you sell the vehicles? Does that stay within that budget category or does it move right to the the general That would help. Okay, I think if you have answers for those particular questions or if you just want to collect them and come back with the answers to that, that would help. Going back to this fund balance report page that we have, I made some comments about it not matching up with the balances we were shown at the Audit Committee in March. So for instance, the park dedication amount in our in our budget shows that the projected beginning fund balance for July 1st, 2022 is only about $2.2 million. The March balance that we have is $22 million. So I think these might need to be adjusted for us because we're being shown different numbers there. I I'd also like staff to double-check that the definitions of each of these special revenue funds are are included in the subsequent pages because it seemed like like the Tree Fund, for instance, I I couldn't figure out what the Tree Fund is is for. And also, the Capital Improvement Fund, I had some questions about that, if if that's supposed to be funding all our CIP projects. Same with the Stevens Creek Corridor Park Fund, how these, I'd like to understand more about how these special capital projects funds are are to be spent. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And would anyone from Finance like to provide some feedback to Councilmember Moore's comments and questions? I do see a couple of people from our Finance Department here, Director Alfaro as well as Thomas. Director Alfaro, you have your...
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to cover a few of these and then I'll send some over to Thomas and then defer to Public Works on a couple of these. So in relation to the Fixed Asset Fund, that fund is there to purchase fixed asset vehicles and equipment. Any sale from those vehicles would be deposited into that Fixed Asset Fund. On pages, starting on page 81 of the budget, under the titling, under Financial Policies and Schedules, there's a fund structure which gives a general description of the funds and what they can be used for. And in some cases, will show where revenue comes from related to those funds. However, I can touch on specifically the the Capital Fund because that is the fund that helps to pay for capital projects. It has has historically been primarily funded by the General Fund. And for those reasons, those dollars aren't as restricted as they might otherwise be because it was General Fund money that went into the Capital Reserve. If we ever needed to, we could pull those dollars back out. But we do transfer money over, actually primarily to the Capital Reserve, and then the Capital Reserve will transfer dollars into either the Capital Project Fund or Fund 420 or Transportation or the Park Fund, depending on where that capital project lives. But so just that that fund is used, you are correct, it is used to fund most capital projects. The Reserve is actually what funds it and moves the money over to the appropriate fund based on the project. So I want to make sure I'm getting, so I got the ISF question, I think the Capital Project Fund. We'll have to come back and double-check on the actuals for the prior years unless Thomas has some additional information on that. And I did want to point out, I didn't get a chance to, but we did add an attachment S to the staff report, and that included any questions that council members had asked, either part of our our proposed budget briefing or prior to the study session. Those were the responses, so that's included in attachment S. And then there should have been a desk item as well where we tried our hardest to get through most of the questions that were asked at the study session on the 17th. There are a few that are standing there. And with that, I'll hand it over to Thomas to cover the question on the fund balance discrepancies.
All right, thanks, Christina. Welcome, Thomas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So now I'll be discussing the reason for the difference in fund balances between the report that is provided to the Audit Committee versus what is presented in the budget. So what is provided to the Audit Committee is a monthly actual fund balance report. So what we do is we take the ending fund balance from June 30th, 2021, and then we add in all the actual revenues to date, and then we subtract all the actual revenues, actual expenditures to date. So for example, the March 22 fund balance would be June 30th, 2021, plus all revenues until March 2022, and then subtract all expenditures until March 2022. So that is a point in time, and it's a year-to-date actual. But what is presented in the proposed budget document is a year-end projection. So that is where we expect to end up at the end of the fiscal year, so where we would expect to be in June 2022. And so that is the difference between those two numbers.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. And Councilmember Moore, your, did you have anything else to add based upon Councilmember Moore's questions and comments? It doesn't seem like it, you, yourself again. Councilmember Moore, your hand remains raised. Did you have any add-ons at this point?
Yeah, just a couple. So when I go to page 82, Special Revenue Funds, I'm unable to find Storm Drain Fund AB 1600. And I I actually would like there to be a review of the the location, if you will, of the 107 vehicles that we have. I believe we are, have around 170 some odd employees. I want to make sure that, because we've had so much turnover, that we we know the location of all these vehicles. And when I look at, so I appreciate the, if I'm understanding correctly, the explanation about the fixed assets acquisition section of the budget, budget unit 63090-985. If I understand correctly, when they, when the vehicles are sold, they would, that should be reflected in that budget item. So the total revenues are showing as as zero for 2020 actual, 2021 actual, and and even for the proposed budget, although that there are several vehicle replacements requested. And when I, when I looked at some of the earlier budgets regarding the the fixed assets acquisitions, I was seeing the same kind of, when I looked back, I would see the same kind of dashes showing no information, even though there were budgeted amounts, even though I can see the vehicles were purchased. So I think that this is an area that needs some attention. And I I want to say an audit, actually, to see what's really going on with all of the the vehicle replacements and and turnover. So this this is one item where I would want us to really feel very comfortable about it before we would approve this this budget amount, especially considering the amount that's been spent on new vehicles and and that there's so many. I think there's the potential that maybe the accounting has, that's being done on on all of their, all of their locations is, there's the potential because there's so many that we're, might be off by by one or two items at this point. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Jim, our City Manager has a hand raised. Jim, did you want to speak to any of these comments?
Thank you, Mayor. My comment would be that I'd rather not hold anything up, but instead is include this type of discussion with our internal auditors as part of their tasks for next year. And then they can go through and review, you know, the actual counts, the locations, you know, they would actually, we'd give them the list, and then they physically would go out and go, yes, there's one and two and three and four, all the way through, as well as verifying any other proceeds that may have come in. And that's just to keep things going. I would think it would be better to have the internal auditor group be the overseers of that. To audit it now would take a considerable amount of time to hire somebody to come in there and do that.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And Councilmember Moore, I'm going to go on at this point. Another round of commentary and questions from our colleagues here. And I guess with no, and your hands raised, I'll go ahead and ask my questions and make my comments. Well, first of all, I do appreciate the Finance Department's turnaround on the questions and the points that we raised from last time, last time being only two days ago. So we did receive a good document with some of our questions and answers to those questions and requests for, I think it was May 18th. And that didn't make its way into today's packet, right? I do see the Q and A, you know, from before, but it doesn't look like Tuesday's questions and comments, as well as your subsequent Wednesday supplement, was inside the published packet from yesterday. Is that correct?
Correct, it wouldn't have been there. We think we sent it over to the clerk around five o'clock today, or shortly after five, to be included as a desk item.
Desk item, okay. Okay, great. So I do have a question. When we are talking about the various items on the work plan that we did talk about on Tuesday earlier in the evening, did any of those modifications? Because it looks like the work plan, as far as certain very critical items, right, have, has gotten modified a bit. And I'm thinking particularly about City Hall. Have those adjustments been made in the materials that you published for today for the draft budget? Or are you going to take our comments as to that, as well as other items under advisement, and then come back to us with the next draft? So is it changed now, or will it be changed in the next step?
It'll be changed as part of the adopted budget. Where we'll show those, we'll show the beginning base, proposed budget, and then all the adjustments underneath it for council consideration.
Okay, so I'm looking at a document with regard to some of the Public Works items. And so let me, let me see if I can find it again, because I was scrolling through. And I'll go ahead and share my screen if I manage to get to it. If not, then what I'll do is I'll go over to my other tranche of questions, which I also am equally appreciative of. And that had to do with the costs that were allocated to City Council. So why don't I just do that at this point? And so that is part of the follow-ups on council and commissions expenditures. That's your, I think number six, Thomas, on the document that you sent us. And so I apologize if I don't quite get the right document shared. I have a few open. So I think this is right, council and commission expenditures, not an accurate reflection of salaries and benefits, which is true. I mean, the number had us, you know, hovering around a million, I think a little bit more. So I do appreciate this follow-up here that actually has an accurate recitation of what the compensation structure is for council. And I will say that I think, certainly as Mayor, I think I put well over a full-time equivalent. I've stated non-facetiously to our City Manager that often, I feel like I'm doing five jobs at City Hall. But let's kind of winnow down on that a little bit. So this table here, you have City Council, five benefited positions, and the total compensation and benefits, $144,270. Not to put too fine a point on this, but this is not each of us, right? This is every single one of us consolidated, $144,270. And that's compensation plus benefits. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. So then when you're adding these, you know, rather relatively larger numbers here, when you say City Council Support, Commissions Committees, and Sister City Support, this is not actually compensation that's going to any of the commissioners or the council members, right? These are, these are employees of the city that are not the elected or appointed officials, right?
Correct. Those are other departments that support the council or commission.
Okay, so scrolling back up here, and I think you had a really good suggestion here. Right here, we can create a new budget program called City Council Support and move all salary and benefits associated with support staff to the new program. Then the City Council budget would only show City Council's costs. I would say, you know, find something that can do an apples-to-apples comparison of actual, you know, by department, you know, personnel costs. And that would be, you know, compensation as well as benefits. And it says the overall department budget would remain unchanged, which is fine. You know, I just think, over time, and now this will be my eighth budget that I've worked, it just seems like a really grossly disproportionate representation when I look at that over $1 million. It makes it look like each council, you know, member with five is, you know, somehow, you know, got 200,000. But really closer, you know, if you cut 144,000, you know, five ways, and this is including, I'll add the 100,000 or so of benefits. I mean, that gets you 30, but then, you know, we're essentially, we're essentially paid $10,000 a year, each of us, right? And so, you know, I won't find a point on how our senior administration gets compensated on a monthly basis. But, you know, I think, you know, this is also a really interesting table here because you're breaking it down by department. You've got admin, admin services. And this thing, which, you know, barely registers as a, as a, as a, as a pen mark, is City Council, and of course, Public Works understandably, you know, you've got a lot of, a lot of employees doing a lot of actual, like, you know, on-the-ground work. You know, community development, followed by Parks and Recreation, admin, admin services, innovation and technology. So, yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that I wanted to say is that when we're laying the groundwork for trying to, you know, talk about the difference between policy and logistics, right? It doesn't seem particularly justified to, you know, say that, you know, council should be doing any logistics. But I think it's also fair to say that we're doing quite, quite a bit, you know, of, you know, kind of leak filling. And I would just, you know, like to kind of suggest that the way that it's construed to the public in our budget, it really is kind of a starting point as to, you know, how we're, you know, ultimately, you know, providing really a fairly significant service to the community. I just don't want it reflected in a sense that, to make it look like the stuff that we do, right, is basically imputed to us, but actually it's benefiting other people. And, you know, of course, people have to get paid for what they do, but at the same time, we shouldn't be creating, like, you know, from a financial perspective, this impression that, you know, the allocations are something that they're not at all. So that's one thing I'd like to, you know, point out. The other question I had, and I'll just have to talk about this qualitatively from the Public Works perspective. I was going through the breakdown of Public Works allocations, and it looked to me like there was still, I think, the 400,000, 500,000 something dollars for City Hall maintenance. But what I didn't see was the residual money that we had allocated for the Civic Center parking. Can one of you point out where that is itemized? And, you know, I'll try to scroll through this document to find, I don't think I'm sharing it anymore. Am I still sharing a document?
You are not, Mayor.
I'm not, okay, thanks very much. Whoever said that, thank you. So I, if one of you could refer me to, okay, so maybe, maybe if I just go to Public Works, Appendix O. Ah, yes, I found it, okay. Let me go here, fit the width, scrolling, and share my screen here. Searchable packet.
Mayor Matt Morley, Director of Public Works. I may be able to help pretty quickly here that the City Hall parking item, the Civic Center parking item is in the CIP, which is a discussion that we'll have on the 7th. This is the operating budget, which is a different, different budget. And this is the maintenance, day-to-day maintenance of City Hall.
Right, okay. Got it, thanks, Matt. Okay, so, but before, before we go past that, okay, so, 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 so these are the budget units, right, for, you know, the various things that are going on in Public Works? But I do see, where was City Hall maintenance here? I think a little bit lower down, right? Facilities and Fleet, maybe? Okay, City Hall Maintenance is here, 548,697. And so Director Morley, you're saying that the Civic Center Plaza Parking is a CIP, which is not reflected in this documentation here? And just to clarify, I think I'm in Appendix O of the budget documentation.
Yeah, this is the, so today is the operating budget, which is, does not include the CIP element. So the list that you're looking here are all day-to-day maintenance items broken out by facility. And the other bigger project that you're speaking of is in the CIP. And that's something that we have coming back to you on the 7th.
So this actually would not, so what I'm referring to in the Civic Center Parking, the thing with like 800 some odd thousand dollars left, is not reflected here? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, why wouldn't it be reflected here? Because this should be something that was carried over and not completed from the current fiscal year. And so before we kind of change course of direction, why wouldn't it have made it over to one of these categories? And, yeah.
When projects are in the, when they're capital improvement projects and they're in that program, they tend, they tend to stick in that program as something that has a beginning and an end typically, and tends to have a sort of an outcome like a report or a project or construction or something. The day-to-day maintenance items fall in here with some exceptions. Our special projects are exceptions. But the day-to-day maintenance, which is what we're looking at here, is what we pay for our air conditioning maintenance and for our electrical maintenance and our fire system maintenance, those kinds of essential elements of maintaining any building.
Yeah, and not trying to, you know, catch or anything, but I think you said something pretty important. So the special projects, just to clarify, those special projects do fall under our capital improvement program, right?
Special projects are handled here mainly because they can be done by our operations staff. So we look at, we look at projects to see where they're most efficiently handled. And when they can be handled sort of in-house with our operations staff, we have a big savings that we, that we can capture there. And so we try to do that where we can. So that's why you would see a list of special projects.
Okay, got it. And I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to put some of these for clarification purposes on there so that, you know, they're a little bit more ingrained in what we plan on doing. It seems like if, for instance, if we basically said, here's a million dollars, go and re-strike, you know, the Civic Center so that when the, you know, the library expansion opens and, you know, we might have capacity, we might have Community Hall repopulated, that we'll have these extra 30 to 50, you know, parking spots. If it's not here, I kind of can see where the Wibble Room exists and basically saying, oh, it's on CIP, but it's not here. But let me kind of clarify this, this point here. With 548,000 and, you know, some, some change in there, 1,000 for City Hall Maintenance, what are you anticipating that would go for in this upcoming fiscal year, starting on July 1st?
I'm sorry, what, what do you mean by what, what do I think it will go for?
Yeah, so you see, this is City Hall Maintenance, right? 548,697. It's not an insignificant amount of money. But we're also, you know, at the time that the current, you know, City Hall conversation, if you will, has been happening in the public sphere, to the extent it has been happening, you know, we see pictures of, you know, beams that have like little X's on them and, you know, little arrows that say, oh, here's the corroding wood. And, you know, I just kind of wonder, you know, if these numbers, as we're looking at, you know, amount that's budgeted, amounts that's been spent, you know, if there's not too much of a delta, you know, what can we be expecting if we're actually budgeting, you know, over half a million dollars to this between July 1st and June 30th of next year? What can we be expecting, for example, on City Hall Maintenance insofar as this goes?
Yeah, so these numbers are all built through, through experience, through what the expenditures have been over history. And we use past experience to build these numbers and to populate these spaces. So we would anticipate that we could have up to a half a million dollar, $550,000 in maintenance items at City Hall, based on what we've seen in past years. And that's how we would build, build the budget for this. So these are realistic expenditures for City Hall or for the library right below it across all of our facilities.
I don't disagree with you at all. And I would just suggest that if you look at the numbers of dollars that have been spent on City Hall Maintenance up to this point in the current fiscal year, it's not really keeping track with the so-called kind of average over time. So that would be nice to kind of see that picked up. Question about the City Hall Annex. So this should be 10455 Torrey Avenue, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, what are we basing this number on, the $25,525?
Those are operating expenses for that facility while it's unoccupied currently. So we'll have utilities that are on there, other miscellaneous expenses. We still have maintenance costs that we have there, landscaping, that kind of a thing that are unavoidable, ongoing costs.
Got it. So, you know, to the extent that we have, say, a work plan item or capital improvement program item, and someone's trying to look at our budget and go, you know, it seemed like in the CIP, we had some allocation of significant amounts of money that were going towards, you know, getting these projects going. Where would you, you know, in your, in your understanding of our budget, and I'll move this over to Finance, you know, if you don't have this kind of immediate, you know, I can't even call it recall, right, because it just started. But where would you go in our budget to look for those numbers? You know, those allocations of, of dollars for these, you know, fairly significant projects that we're undertaking?
I think it would be typical in any organization for there to be the day-to-day maintenance items in the operating budget and for there to be a capital budget as well. And so whether it's a government organization or a private organization, you're going to have, you're going to have those two separate things that are referenced separately. So if you're looking for the operating cost for a facility, you would look in the operating budget. You're looking for what, what the entity is planning to do in terms of capital investments in their infrastructure, then you would look in the capital program.
Got it, okay. So just to kind of clarify this, when I look at the numbers broken down by department, and I look at Public Works, you know, and I'm not making any kind of a qualitative statement here, but that's the biggest number, right? The biggest number in our city, that amount of money allocated toward Public Works. If I'm basically thinking to myself, you know, I'm a member of the public or I'm counsel, and I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, how much money is being spent on these projects and, you know, what particular projects, I'm not really so much looking at the budget. But if I'm looking at the budget document, is what you're saying, the most granular information I can get is going to be, when I look at that big number allocated to the entirety of the Public Works Department? Or is there, is there some kind of number that I can kind of drill down on within the, within the budget document itself that gets me a better idea? So I would imagine, you know, you would say, well, there's a capital improvement projects budget, right, for Public Works, reflected in the budget itself? I see Director Alfaro nodding her head. I think the answer is yes. But, you know, perhaps one of you would like to point me to that.
Mayor, if I may.
Ah, yes, Jim.
Jim, sorry. Yes, you're correct. And that's, all budgets, private, public, you'll, you'll separate out projects, be it capital projects or CIP, as we call it. That would come under one section of the, of the budget document. We would have a CIP book if they were including everything, that even things that didn't get approved. The other one on the maintenance piece of it, you don't include any of the CIP portion in there because that includes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, but all, besides just the actual cleaning supplies, tools, whatnot, that's all of the salaries in there, too, of the people working in, say, the City Hall to do the vacuuming and the cleaning and the repairing of pipes and plumbing and all of that. So a person who was digging around saying, I really want to see something in Public Works, then they would go to the CIP portion of the budget and go down to the listing of all those projects and go, oh, there's the XYZ project that I was looking for. And it would have a, you know, a year-to-date amount that was spent if it's an ongoing project, too.
Great. And help us out here, when we go to these budget documents and all of the various attachments and appendices, which ones of the, which ones of the attachments would speak to capital improvement projects?
Look at Christina on that one. Look at Christina on that one.
Yeah, a current, the current budget doesn't speak to that because we don't have, uh, an approved list of CIPs. We're hoping that we'd add that as part of the adopted budget. And then normally what we try to include in the budget book, um, I just realized we had it in twenty-one but missed it in this year, is we will usually have a tab that says CIP that is just a summary of all the projects that, that have been approved to include it in this document. And then they're also usually listed in the general fund contribution schedule. It won't be in there in this year's budget because again, we don't have which of those projects will be moving forward, but it's found currently in the current proposed budget on page a hundred and five.
Hundred and five, okay.
Uh-huh. So if you look at last year's, uh, general fund contribution, uh, schedule, what you'd normally find is under either special revenue or capital project funds. So it would be the listing of the project and it would denote that this is the CIP. So as a way to kind of tie the two documents together. Um, but, um, Director Morley and City Manager Troop were correct in that those, um, that data lives in the capital budget versus the operating budget. But we do try, attempt to tie the two together because, uh, most people may not have that understanding that there are two budgets, um, two different operating in the capital.
Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying and, and thank you for, uh, explicating that. So let me, let me pull up that schedule you're referencing, Christina. Um, and so that's the general fund contribution schedule. And you say that you normally have, uh, this CIP. So, so the CIP itself, a- a- at the point that you're gonna make it part of the actual budget draft, I mean, we're basically kind of late in the game, right? I mean, i- i- it sounds to me like, you know, staff's preference would be to have this input and then have one more catch-up. But at that one more catch-up, we basically are looking at the CIPs as they exist, uh, in the budget and essentially, you know, what, what staff would think of as final format. But we're looking at it in, at first impression, vis-à-vis the budget itself. I realize that we have capital improvement program, um, a, a study session that we, you know, just finished with on, on Tuesday. But, you know, i- in the actual budget itself, that would be our first look at it, correct? Our next iteration of the budget.
Uh, n- no, not since we broke apart the CIP as a separate study session from the budget. For the last two or three years that we've done that breakout, we, uh, on budget have waited for that direction from council on which CIPs they would like to see included. And then what we do as part of the adopted budget, uh, include those for projects to be approved by council. And so,
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get at, Christina, is, is, is how do we have a check? Right? Because we, we've had this discussion on CIPs. And, y- you know, I, I'm thinking particularly about the, the parking, uh, in the Civic Center. I, I know what I heard from the then director of Public Works that, you know, he had asked for a million dollars, a little bit more, and it was specifically for, you know, the restriping and, you know, doing some of the angled parking a- along, uh, perhaps McClellan as well as Torrey. But I, I've, I've watched, right, I've, I've watched ten months pass now. We're now in the eleventh, and we're gonna be in the twelfth month in about twelve days. And nothing has happened. So I, I'm just, you, and then I go back to the description and I realize that if you interpret it a certain way, it could kind of be interpreted as like, well, you're just doing kind of a study on parking. But no, that was never the intention at all. We actually went back to the well multiple times. And, and this larger amount, this million dollars was proposed so that the actual work could be done. So, so, so this is the problem that I'm trying to get at. You know, I, I, I mean, I, I'm trying to make sure that what we reflect in our understanding of our discussions actually gets pursued during the course of the year. But before we, if you want to comment on that, great. But before we get that, um, can you tell me, in this document that I'm scrolling through right now on this page a hundred and five, where is the CIP budget reflected here? Uh, tell me where to scroll to.
So it's, sorry, make sure I'm unmuted. As I just mentioned, it would not be here yet because we don't know which projects council wants to consider for funding. Uh, once the CIP gets adopted, and I'm trying to see, I might, if I might be able to share my screen, trying to see if I had it.
Go ahead, I stopped my sharing. You go ahead and show.
Perfect. Let me show you the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
And, and, and while you're doing that, Christina, I, I, I guess that's kind of my point, right? I mean, visa, a- and again, I'll repeat the point, vis-à-vis the budget itself, when we're expected to make an approval of the CIP portion of it, we're basically looking at it on first impression, right? So we're going through this exercise. We're going through this study session, this initial study session on the budget. When we actually see the CIPs reflected in the budget, it'll be the next time. And the way you're contemplating it, that's gonna be the first time we see CIP reflected in the budget. And, and, and so, you know, w- w- when I'm looking at these numbers, right, and I'm looking at, you know, what happened with the million dollars for parking at the Civic Center, and i- it seems to me maybe there's some interpretive give with regard to how it was described. And now it's basically turning into, well, just give us four million dollars for a study, um, on, on the parking. But really what it means is, you know, we want to design you a three-story parking lot, you know, overlooking the Regnar Creek, uh, you know, neighborhood. I, I, I just, I, I, I feel like we need to be more stepwise and we need to be more transparent. We need to be more clear. Okay? And, and, and I'm just asking for partnership to help deliver that clarity. I'm not trying to cast aspersions. I'm just trying to say, if we have an intention and it is a stated intention, let's not morph it from one thing, a million dollars, you know, redoing the parking within the Civic Center, let ten and a half months pass and then, you know, end up, you know, kind of out of the blue seeing something, you know, really quite different. So, so, so that, that's, you know, just kind of super structured, you know, high level. That's, that's what I'm trying to get at here. How, how do we, how do we solve this issue? And, and thank you very much, you know, it's, it's nice to see the current budget. But really my point is, like, how do we see this in, in the, in, in the draft budget? Right? Because none of this is reflected at this point.
Correct. And so the way you would see it in the draft budget is when we bring the final budget, we itemize each of these items for council approval. And so I think to your point, to see it all together in one book, that does not actually happen until we get that direction. And then we take the time to put the whole budget book together and print that sometime in July. So the, the way we try to do it is we have all the specific actions and staff ties back those actions in that final approved budget into what we put in the final printed document.
Okay. Well, it, it does sound like, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
And then one more thing, if I, I think Thomas may have, uh, found in our Appendix, uh, B where the project you are referring to, uh, is listed. And so Appendix, uh, B is a new one that we added back. We've had this previously back in, I believe, thirteen, fourteen, or fourteen, fifteen, a listing of all the different budgets by, um, their, uh, different accounts that are included in them. So if I may just refer to Thomas and he can point us to that page, um, that we might go see that project.
Yeah, it looks like it's Attachment R, Appendix B, four-year expenditures on the account level. Is that right, Thomas?
So, in, yes, you can see, um, the four-year expenditures at the account level in Appendix B. And also in Appendix A, I'll just note that we have a CIP schedule. But because this is a proposed budget where we don't know which CIP projects will be approved, uh, that schedule is essentially blank. It only includes the CIP project support and also, it only includes CIP project support and, sorry.
Yeah, you had it, you had it for a moment. I did see capital improvement.
Yeah, so this is a schedule that would essentially link what's in the operating budget versus what's in the CIP budget. And so,
Yeah, I, I, I think you might be asking your machine to do too many things right now sometimes. You're kind of fading in and out and, you know, so. But, but, but point, I think, taken. I mean, I, I can take a look more at, um, Attachment R. So, uh, let me go to, let's see, we do have a couple of people from staff with hands raised. So, so let's go to our city manager, uh, Jim, and then we'll go to Director of Public Works, Matt. Jim?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Um, just what Christina has been saying is the way the city does it here is a generally accepted process on doing the budgets. Um, the way I've been always doing it my whole career is keeping the two items separate. We also have a work plan, um, you know, so we actually have three different areas up here. But, um, the operational has always been kept separate. So council here or there, wherever, would approve of operational budgets, make sure that what we have today can on-go tomorrow. And then the capital budget is to look at what other revenues and other funding sources we have to make sure that we can continue to fund that, um, whatever the projects might be. So it's, so it's looked at in two different phases, not combining them because we purposely break those out since they are different.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, I, I appreciate that, Jim. L- l- let me just, let me just clarify something. I don't have an issue with, uh, the division that you're describing. The, the issue I have is with the descriptions and how they end up morphing and being reinterpreted over the course of the, uh, fiscal year. And so I'm just wondering, i- is there, is there a fix here functionally where we can, you know, kind of put a placeholder, uh, for, uh, for the capital projects inside of the draft budget earlier? Or is it basically when we come back and we're morphing, um, our guidance and direction on, on the capital improvement program, you know, with the, the budget, you know, the final budget, we just have to be extra, you know, careful from council and public's perspective of how these descriptions are being made? You know, and every now and then, you know, I don't mean to pick on anybody, but Vice Mayor Chow, he should like really get granularly into those, you know, details and descriptions. And a need for that is precisely because of this kind of moving target of interpretation. Um, so I, 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 I'll just, I'll just put that out there as, you know, kind of an ongoing concern. Um, but, but, you know, I, I don't have any issue with the, you know, kind of the mechanics of it. Uh, I think the mechanics of it, if they could be refined a little bit and, and help us get to this, like, you know, more clarified, uh, and consistent understanding, I think that's, that's probably a really positive thing. But, um, okay, so I, Matt, did you want to speak before I go on to, I think, um, Councilmember Way and then Councilmember Morgan?
Thank you. Just quickly, uh, Mayor, there, there's been a couple of items with respect to parking that we have completed, um, with the goal of alleviating some of the, of the congestion in parking, including, uh, motorcycle parking, some carpool parking. We're working on that. So there, there's a few, is it at the pace that you, do you like? Maybe not. But, but there are a few things that, that we're working on. Additionally, you know, I think there's probably some merit to having a, a CIP discussion earlier in the year so that we can get, uh, the study session, um, part behind us and, and really work on creating a CIP from a pace perspective of, over the course of, uh, if it makes sense to the council, we, we could bring that earlier in the, in the February timeframe, uh, in, in, in the next year. Uh, so that you can have the conversation earlier, uh, and we can be a little bit more methodical on it as opposed to combining it, um, in one big discussion with the operating budget now.
Yeah, no, it could be a bit of an update as well. That, that sounds like a great idea to me. And lamentably, I won't be, uh, part of that discussion, but, uh, um, yeah, I, I appreciate the input. Um, so, so, yeah, I mean, a- a- and, and a- as to the point of some of the money having been spent uh, and some of the projects having been done, yes, absolutely. I, I agree that some of the, uh, restriping has been done, such as motorcycle parking. You know, I think particularly along Rodriguez, you know, where, where, yeah, I used to park up to like, you know, maybe three months ago or so, maybe two months. And then then one of those stalls was, uh, you know, made for, for motorcycle parking. Um, I think maybe I even saw a motorcycle there once, so. Okay, let's, uh, let's go back to Councilmember Way and then, uh, we'll go to Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, I want to thank you for bringing up the differences of CIP project and daily maintenance. Um, a- as I said, you know, running five schools and district office, you can see how much our city also does every day to maintain our facilities. I mean, facilities don't clean itself. Trees don't cut itself. Um, leakings don't fix itself. There are a lot of things that, uh, that's in the background that our, our people are doing that's serve our residents and serve us, you know, the street cleanup. So I really want to appreciate that you point out that how much special projects and maintenance that operations is in the budget because that they, those are actually work that our city staff are doing. So, um, so thank you for, uh, mentioning that. And, and also I want to say that I look at the, um, cost allocation to our city council and commissioners. I actually have no problem with that because cost allocation shows how mu- how many hours we, we work on things and how many hours the staff and us or the commissioners work on it. And that shows our diligence, that our time spent, that running the city or supporting, um, all the projects. So I have no problem with cost allocation. I, I feel that reflects the true work we do, the true time we spend. And so, um, that's just my comment for the two subjects. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Way. Yeah, no, I, I think you can get that reflection as well as an accurate reflection of what the actual compensation is. And, um, you know, with that, um, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't see those as being at loggerheads with each other. So, um, Councilmember Willie, and then we'll go back to Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't intend to, uh, jump in front of the other councilmen, but, uh, okay, I'll take the opportunity. Uh, I, I think this discussion has been, you know, really helpful. If, if, you know, largely, largely focused on questions that, given the, the written, uh, information in the budget or prompting these questions, we're not city staff directly that are working, generating those numbers. And so to us, wow, i- is this meaning that? And how does this translate to that? As far as I'm concerned, if we're likely to ask these questions, our community would also be asking these questions. And so I, I, I see this, even though it's taking time, I see this as being really pretty fundamental to, to create the transparency, to hopefully continue to improve the, the published budget so that it's more readable, understandable by our community. That being said, if I go into a couple, um, items that I think are, are worthy of noteworthy and, and, uh, it may or may not be the best time tonight to bring them up, but leveraging on what, uh, Mayor Paul said about, uh, his, the amount of time that he feels he's putting in four to five people's work. That's what I see, the amount of time that he's, he's put in. And then when we have a council budget of a, close to a million dollars, it might appear to the community, wow, you know, at least they're being compensated. When in fact, the only compensation is the stipend or the benefit. Now, keep in mind, and again, this is mostly for our residents that are either watching tonight or will see, uh, you know, watch the, the video. Those benefits are not, not vacation, not sick time. It's strictly insurance. Totally different than our day jobs where the benefits include the, the typical benefits. So the compensation for the council is just the stipend and some insurance, make sure that we've got glasses to wear and, uh, our teeth aren't giving us problems. That being said, I've, I've kind of suggested on numerous occasions that I would really support more staff support, especially for the mayor. The, the, the amount of time that we, and especially the mayor, are contributing to the city principally for resident engagement so that the community knows that we want to listen to them, we want to hear from them, we want to do the things that they want done in the community. But how much time we have as, as part-time councilmen, because we have day jobs, we really need to get the most effective use of that time. And by having so, a city staff purch- person take more of the logistical stuff, Mayor, my hand, you know, my, take my hat off to you. The amount of time that you put in for, uh, ribbon cuttings at, uh, Westport, for groundbreakings at Canyon View, for, um, the garbage cleanup off of Two A, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And, and I truly believe logi-, uh, this logistical kind of things could be done by city staff. When I have brought it up with our previous city managers, I've been told, no, that's not the way city staff works. City staff does the city stuff and the city council does the city council stuff. And that was it. If you know the, uh, times that I've had the community roundtables, that was without city staff help. That's me putting in that time that I have to keep separate from my day job. And I don't spend those extra hours with my family or even resting. And so, so I think it's really important to make sure that the community understands what really is in the city council's budget. And I would even be in favor of that line saying stipend, which is something like seven hundred dollars a month, where just recently we were up a month, where just recently we were up in Sacramento at a conference with our other city councilmen, you know, our time isn't covered, it's expenses. And the insurance would really be nice if that was identified as it's insurance. Don't be confused, it's not vacation, it's not sick time, it's nothing else. So, so with that being said, I, I don't think that's the topic of tonight, but the mere fact that I think we need very good transparency, the community needs to know how the, how the city staff is being run, how the city council is being run. And all this is for them. So I'll leave it at that. Doing a great job, Mayor, doing a great job, fellow councilmen, and doing a great job, Jim. Thank you much.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Very briefly, before I go to Councilmember Moore, I just have to respond to some points that you made. You know, look, we all did this willingly, that's fine, you know, and I know that it's a, you know, kind of a political hot button to, you know, you know, try to, try to get an increase and no one's looking for an increase. But I, I think, I think one of the things that we really need to be aware of, you know, and this is an example that I think is really quite topical. I, I'm the alternate to, I'm the alternate to the environmental review. Okay, so I'm listening in on the environmental review. Vice Mayor Chow and I, we took a lot of time to help rewrite the commissioners and committees' handbook, okay? This is years ago, maybe two and a half, three years ago now. And it was very explicit, the committee chair, the commission chair sets the agenda, working with the staff leaders, okay? I can't count how many times and how many commissions and how many commissioners I talked to, when I asked them, why was your meeting canceled? People say, I don't know, I have no idea. Now, if we've stated policy and people say, look, you know, there's a dichotomy between policy and logistics and our policy's not being followed and we're having, you know, 1.1 or however, you know, many dollars imputed to us, the vast majority of which is staff time, then I would have to say, at the very least, follow our policy, okay? You know, the chairs of our commissions, the chairs of our committees, that's not a joke. You know, this isn't silly season with regard to trying to figure out like who really, you know, has the authority and go ahead, you know, put things on the agenda and push particular policy and then pretend it's operations. You know, and I don't come at this trying to talk about, you know, how little I'm paid for, how much that I do. I, I come at this for, you know, basically saying, if we're going to set up a system like this, then at the end of the day, we need to be accurate with, with regard to what we're doing, okay? And so I, I think it is, it is very important for us to go ahead and say the budget should be reflecting, you know, the reality of our allocations here. And so at the very least, you know, say, yeah, I agree with you, you know, say that the benefit is for insurance. But I, I think more saliently, you know, looking at the rules and how these are reflected in the dollars and cents, I, I just see, you know, something of, you know, inaccuracies and, and, and a lack of, you know, kind of alignment with, with practices. So, so that's, that's why I would say as a qualitative perspective, and I think a good, a good functional start is basically to break out compensation, you know, from, from the so-called cost allocation as, as relates to personnel. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul, and I appreciate your comments and those of Councilmember Willie. I want to mention something just to, to perhaps remind people that we do have a joint use agreement with the Cupertino Union School District. It is within our, our budget. It includes Hyde, Kennedy, Collins, Eaton, Lincoln, Regnart, Faria, Stevens Creek and Garden Gate Elementary Schools. And it is, the school site maintenance total is 1.63 million dollars. I am curious about this because we are paying so much that I, I don't want to see that Cupertino is maintaining the fields and getting use and perhaps the surrounding cities which are part of CUSD, I'm wondering if they are also making equal contributions and, and having use of their fields? Or, or are we essentially creating a benefit to CUSD by electing to have this joint field use agreement? But my main point is that we are providing 1.63 million dollars worth of benefits maintaining these fields. In the, the meeting question documents, and thank you, Thomas, for providing this this afternoon, there is item 11, the account totals and balances where the city's checking accounts were mentioned, and that included the Wells Fargo operating account, the workers' compensation account, also Wells Fargo, the Wells Fargo payroll account, and the Wells Fargo flexible spending employee benefits account. I would like council to be sent those totals along with an update from the, we might have a more recent update of these accounts, but we had an update from December 31st of the accounts, but that, what I found was only the Wells Fargo workman's comp checking account, the Wells Fargo regular account, the Leif State pool, and the investment account, the Chandler investment account. So I'm wondering what the, the kind of, the grand total is. And then going to the fund balance report on page 109, I see in the, in the general fund, it's essentially, we have, I believe, 35.8 million of the 97 million is, I believe the words unencumbered at this point, if someone could correct me on that. So I'm, I'm, want to understand what we have for available funding, what, what has already been assigned throughout these various funds of the money that we have and so that we understand how much we have for the, the capital improvement projects and the, the work program. My concern there is that when we, when we, at the start of this process, we were told that we have a balanced budget and, but it's a balanced budget, if I'm understanding correctly, before we add the city work program and before we add the CIP. And it's going to become unbalanced as soon as we add those on. And so I'd like to, to understand a little bit more about how we're going to be paying for these items, where, where's the money coming from? And I did notice there's a section on financing within the budget, budget balancing strategies, page 160 to 161, and if, if it's anticipated that we are, we're going to need to adopt those strategies. So a couple of things, I'd like to have the full, full accounting, and, and I don't know if other cities actually put the full accounting, a snapshot of, of all of the account totals and balances within their budget. But if, if, if it's not customarily done, I would like it at least to be sent to, to council and perhaps as we move forward and have those monthly, monthly treasurer statements, we'll, we'll have the, the full accounting on a more regular basis, and I think that would be very helpful. But, but I'd like to hear some more comments moving forward about what we have for, for funds available in order to pay for things so that we don't select items that are really too, too expensive at this point and that we need to think about how we stage and plan for having, if it's something that's four or five million dollars in the CIP moving forward. So I'd like, likes a little bit more assistance on that. And, and this seems to be just a study session, so we will have just a little bit of time where that information can be provided to us and along with some advice on what, what projects to choose. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Yeah, and I think that it, in a more stepwise manner captured my point about the CIP in the draft. But Jim, you have your hand raised or city manager, did you want to speak to Councilmember Moore or answer some of the questions?
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Moore. So the one, the term you were looking for is an unassigned fund balance, meaning we don't have a, a contract that needs the money or we don't have something coming up truly savings as, as you and I or a resident would have in their bank account to go, I'm going to go buy a new car or something. So that's roughly, and I'm going to look to Thomas and Christina, about that, that was at 37 million dollars in unassigned fund balance, so it's there and available. I believe the other one for CIP, correct me, Thomas, is approximately 20 million dollars in CIP in the, the fund there that we have ability to use for any of the projects. Was that, was that a correct statement?
For CIP, we have approximately a little under 14 million.
14 million.
Funds in the capital reserve as well as the capital improvement program fund. And you were correct that the general fund unassigned was 37, but due to the approval of the third quarter budget report earlier this meeting, that would increase that by approximately 9 million. So we're looking at unassigned fund balance projected to be 47 million at the end of this fiscal year. And I will also clarify that there's a difference between, there's some total of all the funds in our bank accounts versus fund balance, because fund balance does not represent only cash. What's in the bank accounts are cash investments.
Through the mayor, Thomas, can you tell me what page you're referencing or if you are referencing the capital improvement fund number, Fund 420 on page 109? Because on that page, the projected beginning fund balance for July 1st, 2022 is showing 30 million, 30.8 million for capital, the capital improvement fund. So maybe there's been an update that, that I don't have access to yet?
So if I can answer your question right now, so the 15.9 million is listed in the CIP staff report, and that is what we estimate to have available. But what we have in the budget document is proposed fund balance at the end of the year. And so that does not include all funds that are encumbered, only what we expect to spend within this fiscal year. Because what we have seen historically with capital improvement project, projects is that, you know, they don't spend all the funds in the first year. And so what we have in the page 109 is just a projection of what is expected to be spent, you know, within fiscal year 2022. And so because all the expenses are not expected to be spent within fiscal year 22, that number is higher than what is actually available. But the CIP staff report lists what is actually expected to be available.
All right. Also through the mayor, so if we're thinking about the, the dollar value of capital improvement projects, are, are you suggesting that we look at the 14 million dollars as a parameter or, or we can go beyond that? How does that work?
So 14 million is what is currently available, you know, in the CIP funds, but, you know, there may be additional transfers that are recommended, transfers from the general fund to the CIP fund, so that is a possibility, as well as other funding sources that can be explored.
Okay, and our general fund, the unassigned is 37 million?
37, but then due to the third quarter report, expected to be 47.
47, okay. So does, is all of that unassigned? So we could move all of it into the CIP if we so wished?
Yes, that is possible.
And we'd still be able to essentially pay all our bills everywhere, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so Thomas, that, that page, you're at 42 as of June 30th. If we're allocating nine, what's, what's the discrepancy? It seems like you're saying there, there would be 47 based upon the nine that we just allocated. So I'm looking at page 109 under total capital project funds, proposed budget ending fund balance as of 630, 2022, and it says 42.8 million.
So that is an older number and that's just, that's because we continually update that number based on, you know, what our expenses are and, you know, projected expenses to the management.
I see. So, so your projected increase is actually about seven million more than what you thought it was? Was it, was it 47 or 49 you were saying?
47, yeah. So that was, that number is divided in the third quarter report.
Got it. So it's about $5 million more than you thought it would be when you made this projection. Okay, let's see. Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Way, and I, I do note that it's eight o'clock. Let's, let's have another round of comments. If we had motions, I'd be happy to entertain one. I, I would like to check in with the city attorney. You know, there are a lot of allocations here. I think there is a lot of bandwidth that should be allocated to helping alleviate not just the mayor's work, but the, the city council's work. Because I, you know, I'm certainly not the only person, for example, picking up garbage off of the 280 off-ramp. I mean, just every single one of these things, you know, all the councils is working very hard. So, so Chris, if we were to say, for instance, propose a budgetary allocation on top of what's being described here, such as for legislative aid or another position, would that need to be come in the direction of a motion or how do you contemplate that? I'm assuming that it's properly noticed to have this discussion, and if it's not, then I don't know where else the discussion would be made.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think a motion would be appropriate. My, you know, my understanding of the purpose of this meeting is for allow, to allow council to direct staff to make changes to the, the proposed budget before a final budget is brought back. So, you know, that, that would include adding additional positions, for example. And Christina can feel free to weigh in if, if there's anything she'd like to add.
Okay, thanks, Chris. And Director Alfaro, did you have, if you could add to that comment?
No, nothing to, sorry, excuse me, nothing to add to city attorney's comment, maybe as part of this next session, I just wanted some clarifying points and answer some of, further answer some of Councilmember Moore's questions.
Sure. And I see our, our city manager has a hand up as well. Jim, did you want to follow up on any points or was that just artificial?
Just a real, just, I, I mean, it's just as Christina said, you know, I'm also agreeing with what Chris, our city attorney, said that this would be a time if you, if the council wants to add, subtract, modify, however you want to call it, this, this meeting would be the time to do that, yes.
This would be the time. Okay, so we're agreed upon for that procedure. Christina, you had some follow-ons on Councilmember Moore before we go back to Vice Mayor Chow. And just to let everyone know, I'm going to ask for a motion so that we can continue some, some thoughts and comments. Yeah, after, after Christina.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be expeditious here with my comments. The first was related to being able to pay for everything if we use that 46 million. You actually couldn't use the full 46, part of it is tied up in dollars we're waiting to come in as part of the RISE contract that has a, a contract where we're sharing, using part of the fees collected to pay for a contract, and the other portion of the fees will cover administrative costs. We'd want to leave those dollars there. And although we do have an economic uncertainty reserve fully depleting that unassigned fund balance would mean we, anything we were off on, on our projections or anything unexpected, we would have to dip into that committed reserve. When it comes to the capital reserve, the reason you're seeing that large number as well is because that's everything that's in the capital reserve, whether it's committed, assigned, they're actually not allowed to have an unassigned, an unassigned fund balance in the capital reserve per the accounting rules that govern those accounts, only general fund is allowed to have that. So when Thomas talks about we don't spend everything in the current year, we carry it over, those, that still shows up as total fund balance, but a portion of that fund balance is committed already to those CIPs that have been approved. And so the free and clear balance is the 14 million that was in the CIP staff report. In addition, I want to make sure I'm covering all my points here. Where was I going with that? So I can't remember where I was going with that, but, oh, I did, one other point, you also have to, in addition to that 14 million in the capital project fund, council as part of mid-year added an additional $10 million in the general fund for capital improvement projects. So my recommendation, if you wanted to go over that 14 million, is that you would ask us to allocate money from that committed reserve, which we need permission to count from council to be able to do. And lastly, when we add the, if, let's say, the $9.6 million in additional funding that includes one-time and ongoing costs were to be approved on top of the CIP, on top of the work program, if all of that gets approved and all of a sudden our expenses are higher than the revenues we're projecting, we would still be balanced because the one-time costs related would be sufficient that we'd say for these one-time costs, we're using these one-time dollars and unassigned fund balance. And overall, on an ongoing And overall, on an ongoing basis, the city's budget would remain, uh, balanced. And I think that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Vice Mayor Chow, I'll, I'll start with you to ask for a motion, if you're willing, put one on the table for us to continue our discussion.
I have a partial one, but then since I have not commented, I would rather that I finish my comment first before going to a motion.
Okay, why don't, why don't you finish your comments and, uh, if you have follow-on questions?
So first, uh, regarding the CUSD field maintenance, at the CUSD two by two meeting, they said that their board is considering, they hope that they want, they want to maintain the field. The reason is the city spent one point four million dollars to maintain the field, but we also collect rental fees for field use. And, uh, CUSD thinks they can do a better job by maintaining and still collect rental, so to make a profit. So they actually would rather that they can maintain the field. They hope to come to us and potentially renegotiate the joint field agreement. So I just thought you should know that. And, uh, so, uh, a question about the motion. So this is an initial study session, if we make some motion to add, subtract items, but we also made some, a lot of minor requests for information. I assume we don't have to capture all of those within the motion, but they won't be ignored, right?
No, Vice Mayor, the, the request for information really technically, and, and I know that, and I appreciate, you know, staff sometimes distributes that information to everyone, but it really, you know, if one of us asks for information, it should be sent to all council, you know, at the end of the day. And the other understood, um, the other, the other understood communication mechanism is that if you ask for information, you should be getting it. There shouldn't be a need for a PRA to ask for information and materials from our own staff. I mean, that, that's just, uh, you, you know, bar none, as a council member, as an elected official representing the, the voters, if you ask for information, you should be able to get it. So, um, that's even codified. It's codified that we can talk to city personnel, and that, that target morphs over time. But this discussion has been had in the past, and the municipal code was explicitly changed to make that very clear. And so do not make part of your motion asking for information, ask for that information, and that information should get to all of us. If it's not getting to us, then come back in the next session and just say, I asked for this information and it didn't come through. That's what I was suggesting.
Okay, great. So I have a question about, um, this, thank you for bringing this up. So this maintenance cost, so I see that the city hall maintenance is half a million. Queensland Centre is over half a million, Senior Centre is, um, point six million two, and Community Hall, um, half of those. Blackberry From, so it, does that include, uh, the pool? And, uh, so that's also half a million. And I'm just wondering, is this a typical, uh, spending we have every year? On, I know this is pandemic year, but I, I'm assuming the maintenance cost is the same. So is that what, a typical year for us?
Would anyone from staff like to pick on that question regarding maintenance?
Thank you, Mayor, Matt Morley, Director of Public Works. Yes, these are, these are typical, as I mentioned before, we use our past experience to build our budget for this current year. Uh, so we're, we're building based on what we've seen for expenditures in the past.
Hmm, so I'm actually curious about, say, city hall maintenance, how it varies over the years? Is, is there a way from the Open Gov to find out this information?
Thomas? Or Jim, Jim has his hand raised as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, and Thomas, if I speak incorrectly, please correct me. Um, no, it, it'll show the differences of what's being spent, but it won't have, um, we fixed two plumbing items this time and an electrical, electrical issue and something else. It doesn't, it doesn't show work order type level, that, that's far.
That's not what I'm looking for, I'm wondering, just, uh, let's say I want to find out over the past, past five years, how much, not budgeted, how much we spent on city hall maintenance? What's our, what's the actual, would I be able to find out from Open Gov? Because I remember I saw Christina, uh, using Open Gov, it's amazingly con- convenient but complex. I don't know how to get that, but is that available? If that's available, then I'll, um, try to find out from staff how to get that information.
I'll let Thomas answer that one.
Yes, that information is available on Open Gov.
Okay, right, so if you could send me, um, an instruction, uh, later on how to get that information, that would be really helpful. And then my question would be, I keep hearing that it's very expensive to maintain city hall because it's aging and all this older equipment. But then I don't see the expense to maintain city hall to be too much more. I thought city hall is a lot bigger than Queensland Centre. I don't know what's the square footage, it feels like it's twice as big than Queensland and twice as big than Senior Centre. And how come the men, so the maintenance for city hall is really not too much more?
That's probably a city manager question.
No, um, I actually.
Matt Morley, our Public Works. Thank, thank you, I, I actually haven't done the comparison in square footage or exact maintenance cost between Finland and, uh, and city hall. Um, but again, the, these are, I mean, they're actual expenses, so as, as we have an expense, we book it to the correct facility. Uh, and so these are, these are real-time, uh, expected costs. We'll point out that in the budget book, um, the expenses, um, by year are, are identified, so you have them there. Um, so each, each budget item has a page, um, and on the, sort of the back of that page is the year-by-year, uh, actual expenditures.
Mm-hmm, okay, so does this, uh, this cost include the actual cost, but it also includes staffing cost, right?
That's correct.
So, um, so these are all maintenance are done in-house? So these charges include the hours, staffing, uh, cost, uh, for, for, for making this maintenance plus material?
We have a combination of in-house, uh, maintenance and contract maintenance. Uh, so we, we evaluate to see what we can do in-house and what we need to contract for. For instance, high voltage electrical work, we contract for that. Uh, some, a good portion of the, of the, uh, mechanical, the air conditioning systems, we contract for that. So there, it, it depends on the particular system or the particular item.
Okay, but this cost that we see here include either in-house or contract and the material?
That's correct.
That's everything, okay, thank you, that's good to know. And then for the traffic engineering, I'm curious, it's one point four million dollars. Um, so that's just for maintenance, right? It's not for adding anything? So that's typical a year, we spend one point four million dollars just to maintain traffic engineering or the lights?
Our, our traffic signal maintenance here, we have a lot of traffic signals and they're highly complex with the computers that are in them to ensure that they function properly, and you, I guess you could also probably understand the risk with them not functioning.
Yeah, but traffic engineering and traffic signal maintenance, how are they different?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the differentiation there. So traffic signal maintenance is the actual maintenance, traffic, uh, traffic engineering is the engineering group that supports, uh, that supports the, um, all of the traffic flow. So how our lanes are configured, how our roadways are configured, um, that, that kind of a thing.
Uh, so you mean this then includes the traffic engineers who would analyze traffic flow, so that would then decide how we should adjust, adjust the traffic signal?
That's correct.
Okay, then for safe route to school, uh, does this include, uh, staffing for the safe route to school and program cost? Or this is just the sta-, I don't know, what, what's this point six million include?
Yeah, the six hundred thousand includes, uh, a number of things, but also, yes, staffing is included in that item.
In staffing and, and what?
Staffing, uh, uh, other costs that are associated with supporting the program, so materials, equipment, that kind of a thing.
That's a lot for, but this does not include the walk, uh, audit items that we found annually.
That's correct.
And how many staffing we have for safe route to school?
I believe our FTE count is two, uh, maybe a little bit more than that, because we probably have a portion, uh, of, eh, in the one and a half, two area, I think. There may be a portion of our traffic engineer as well that's in there, um.
So let's say if, uh, we support, uh, a road deal at a school site, so that would be included in the, this.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I was thinking public works is all public work stuff, so now this also includes programs, right?
Yes.
But for senior centre, senior centre program is not included here.
That's correct, that's just a, um, a maintenance item in that.
That's just maintenance, okay, so for the senior centre, uh, there was a senior centre page. I was trying to figure out exactly how much we allocate for senior centre, but then we have charge for services, which is, uh, the support of different departments for providing, like, HR, IT, different services. Uh, so I could not figure out exactly how we actually spend on supporting senior centre. I think, um, the reason is, uh, Las Gatos has a senior task force. They did a comparison between different cities, and I was surprised at that time that in their comparison, Cupertino spent, uh, about one point five million dollars, according to their table, with, uh, twelve FTS, and, but maybe they got the information from, I think it's two thousand twenty one, that's when they had the information. And then, but then, then, then I realized that one point five million probably includes charge for services. And so what exactly, when we compare with another city, they might consider the budget for senior centre is, uh, different, doesn't include charges for HR and IT support. So I hope to get some clarity on, a breakdown of exactly what we are spending for senior centre. Could I get that information? And then, then that should also include the maintenance cost, so we have a good picture of how much we spend on senior centre.
So if you're looking for the entire programmatic cost, um, I'm, I'm not sure how the, uh, how that's broken out for, uh, for the Parks and Recreation Department, but for the operations and maintenance side, uh, on page four hundred and ninety-nine of the budget book is, that's, uh, I'm sorry, that's city hall maintenance, that's a good example nonetheless, uh, of one particular facility. It lines out nicely, um, the, sort of the program, and then on subsequent pages, it provides you with, uh, the expenditures across, uh, employees, uh, materials, contract services, and it identifies staffing. So that, that, we have that for every facility, for every program, uh, so it's available to you and provided in the, in the budget document.
Yeah. Um, so I'm seeing, for example, for senior centre on page three hundred forty-seven, that's under the Parks and Rec. So the total general fund, the cost is nine twenty-six thousand. Total expenditure, oh, sorry, total expenditure is twen- one point three million dollars about, that's twenty twenty actual. And, uh, but then I'm trying to figure out exactly how we are, what's the funding? Um.
Vice Mayor, if I may, this is Joey McReaney, Director of Parks and Recreation. I believe we provided an update in one of the budget documents, and I'm trying to go through them now. Um, but I think that there were two different pages that the staffing was pulled out of. Um, so it's a little bit confusing, but we tried to condense that information in the update too.
Oh, mm-hmm. Right, okay, uh, that's fine, I'll look that later, um. So, yeah, I have a similar question for sports centre too, I'm, I would, eh, I hope to break it down also so I can first understand it, it better. And then the last question is about, oh, not last, last question, and then I have, uh, one request to add. So, uh, last question is regarding the vehicles. So we have a hundred and six vehicles with, uh, a hundred some employees. Do, can we, before we, the internal auditor, do a detailed, uh, audit analysis, can someone give me at the high level, why we need this many vehicles with almost one car per employee? Um, how does, how, how, uh, at the high level, how does that work? And then also, um, how many are we? I, um, I think we are, we have budgeted, uh, six hundred thousand for new vehicles this year, is this true? And how, how many we are planning to buy and how many we had bought the past few years? And when we buy new vehicles, are we replacing the old ones? If we replace the old ones, where do they go? Do we sell them, uh?
So, uh, let me see if I can answer a couple of your, uh, questions, Vice Mayor. Um, so the, the vehicles, um, I'll reverse order since that's easier for me to remember, uh, are sold at auction when they're done, and that's per our, our purchasing policy on how we can dispose of vehicles. Uh, so they're, they're provided that way. Um, we, we do have, um, uh, sort of some vehicles that, that are special use vehicles. For instance, we have for our stormwater program, a Vector truck that doesn't get driven every day because it's, it's just a big piece of equipment. Um, and so, so that's a, a piece of vehi-, uh, a vehicle, piece of equipment that, uh, that we use on, on a very regular basis. But, um, but, uh, an employee may need an alternative mode of transportation for their day-to-day streets work. So there's, uh, a number of vehicles that serve sort of, uh, special purposes like that, that, um, we are, um, procuring. And, uh, let's see, I think we are planning on replacing, um, as I'm looking at my list here, roughly a half a dozen vehicles, um, and three, three or four pieces of equipment this year, uh, in, in our replacement program, uh, to the, to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars roughly. We do have a very detailed vehi-, uh, vehicle and equipment replacement program, uh, and that's, that's also in our policies, uh, so that we are, we have guidance on when to replace them, so it's, it's based on years of age and mileage. Uh, so there are tru-, uh, specific trigger points to that, so we keep the vehicles until they trigger that, uh, mark. We actually do a, uh, an assessment of the vehicle at that point. If the vehicles are in good condition and, and don't have maintenance issues, then we might, uh, carry on with them for a while. Um, if they're, um, same, uh, likewise, if they, if they are problem vehicles, they might, um, get recommended by the, the mechanic to go out a little sooner. Uh, but nonetheless, it's a, it's an active, um, evaluation that occurs on all of our vehicles.
Hmm, okay, thank you. So then, finally come to my request. Um, so I think we have a gap in things that we desperately need, which is expertise in planning at, at the high level that could be in charge of, um, what we, we see today, for example, we need someone to be in charge of planning, especially in legislative issues and in charge, in charge of outreach to the community. For example, when we need someone to make a presentation for community groups, for the focus group meeting, we find out there is no one who could do it. But, uh, in Saratoga, their community development director does it. And right now, I think probably we need someone, um, at the executive level who can be in charge of that. And also, more, and very importantly, ours, the six million dollars BMR fund has been sitting there with no one applying for years. I think we really need someone, um, at the high level who can take charge in engaging with affordable housing developers, um, actively to deliver low-income and middle-income housing. uh actively to deliver low income and middle income housing, which is what I see in like Menlo Park and other cities. I think um there is a a gap there that we really really need to fill. Um so I would like to request um assist, I would like the staff to consider adding an assistant or deputy assistant manager position, uh especially focusing on planning and the community engagement. Uh and engagement with the various housing developers, so that we can make progress on this very important issue. And also then be in charge of housing element. And and it's especially engagement with both the community and developers, property owners on housing element. Well, so that's my request. Then um I'm I'm ready to make a motion. I'd like to, the motion to direct the staff to consider adding a position for legislative ad- aid, legislative aid or government affairs position to support the city council. And then add an assistant and de- deputy or deputy city manager position to to specialize in planning outreach to both the community and developer and property owner community to make strategic uh decisions, so that we can make strategic progress on this important issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Way, you you had your hand raised a moment ago, but you lowered it. Did you want a second Vice Mayor Chow's motion or ask or?
That I I took it down because I'm not seconding the motion.
Oh, you're not seconding the motion. Uh would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion? We'll go by a show of hands. Councilmember Moore and uh Councilmember Willie, I saw it in that order, so Councilmember Moore.
Uh uh well, I'm I I'd actually like to have um two items removed from the budget and have a return uh as uh uh future appropriations requests. Uh one being the fixed asset educate, at fixed asset acquisition budget unit six thirty dash ninety dash nine eight five, the vehicles. Until we have more information, it should come back at another time. And then budget unit one hundred dash twelve dash seven zero five, the special project fuse fellow. Um and have that one uh come back at a a future time as a appropriation request. So uh in in um so I I guess I would like to to have a friendly amendment to uh the the Vice Mayor's um uh in- initial motion. If she would like to consider uh what I would like to add, then then I uh would be interested in seconding it at that point, but.
Okay, so could you, sorry, I didn't capture that. I'm I'm happy to accept a friendly amendment. What?
But so I would like to remove the fixed asset acquisition budget unit six thirty dash ninety dash nine eight five and have that come back later as an appropriations request. Yeah, six, six three zero dash ninety dash nine eight five. And then budget unit one hundred dash twelve dash seven zero five, special project fuse fellow. And have that also return as a later appropriation request. And there was a suggestion that it could uh come back um as in a different form, not necessarily be a fuse fellow. Um but uh I would like to have both of those items removed.
Okay, procedurally, uh before we uh have further discussion on on the motion itself, I I do see a couple of staff hands raised. So let's go Director Alfaro and we have Thomas as well with a hand raised. Did you want to speak to the friendly amendment brought forth by Councilmember Moore, Christina?
Just uh real quick, I think Councilmore may have covered it. I just, for clarification purposes, want to make sure it's clear. The fuse fellow um was moved to a limited term, two-year position um in between the printing of the proposed budget and when we did the presentation on Tuesday. And I think the way she said it now is whether it's a a special project or a position, she wouldn't want to see either one of those. I just want to clarify that that's what I'm understanding.
Okay, so you're saying it's now as a, is it a considered a full-time position under economic development?
Yes, so it wouldn't be in the budget book. Um if you have the proposed budget uh present- presentation we did on Tuesday handy. I'm uh trying to get to that page.
So the that the answer is correct, so until we've until we've gotten and and codified the environmental, I mean, the uh uh economic uh development committee, I would want to leave that and and then depending on what the scope is and after we've had that discussion, I think that would, to me, that makes more sense to um bring it back at that time and and get the appropriation. And then we, and then it's all, it's kind of all in the sunshine, we all know what's what's happening. Um I think that makes more sense. Thank you.
Okay, now we have a hand raised from our deputy city manager. Katie, did you want to speak to this?
Uh thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh I just want to cl- clarify so that you all are aware. Um i- if the uh part, limited term analyst isn't approved, uh there are two work program items that are pending additional bandwidth, uh which are the visitor center and youth who work items. So I just wanted to let you know so that that can be part of your decision-making.
What what why do they need to be under fuse fellow categorization, Katie? Why can't we just?
So whether it's the fuse fellow and um just to clarify, we did uh change that since the printing of the draft budget and then to this presentation. Uh was originally fused was set up as a kind of a cost-sharing model where the organization pays for half of the cost. So it was a cost-saving effort. However, since then, we've found out that they are changing their model. And so given that uh it does make sense for us to just bring it in-house and do a two-year limited term position. Um and so in order to get those items done in terms of staff bandwidth, we do need that additional position or support from somewhere.
All right, um so let's bring it back to the councilmembers discussing the motion at this point. So Councilmember Moore, you had um offered friendly amendments. Vice Mayor Chow, it sounded like you were accepting the friendly amendments. Or did you have a further discussion at this point, Vice Mayor?
Uh I accepted, except the what is the number for the fuse fellow?
Um the, thank you, the fuse um fuse fellow, uh one hundred dash twelve dash seven zero five. Um and uh we want to make sure that that um, yes, it was under under economic development. One hundred dash twelve dash seven zero five for the fuse fellow or the um the limited term analyst. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, and as I understand it, Councilmember Moore, uh can you verify your second of that motion as amended?
Yes, I second the amended motion.
Uh although I guess it's not technically amended, it was just, it was just brought on the table, you asked for some modification prior to seconding it, so. So now we have Vice Mayor Chow's motion on the table and you have seconded it. Uh Council, let's go to Councilmember Willie before we go back to Vice Mayor Chow, if Vice Mayor Chow you wanted to. And then we'll go to Councilmember Way with the hand raised. Uh Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, hmm, thank you, Mayor. So uh I like Councilman uh uh Vice Mayor Chow's and Councilman Moore's uh uh motion. Um I would like to toss out though, I mean, I I think it's great. If we're gonna make progress on BMR, if we're gonna make progress, uh you know, with the resident engagement and developers, uh the community and stuff, you gotta have somebody to do it. The the concern that I have though uh is that I'd really like to see some some more definitive uh substance on on how to get from point A to point B. Uh I, it looks like our city manager is not on online at this time. And I I'm think I'm hearing from Vice Mayor Chow that it's a request to consider, which doesn't really make it uh solid, because I don't think we should be adding headcount until we truly have, you know, a good job definition. Because I would, I would be disappointed if if without clear understanding of what the, how that objective is going to be met, we add another headcount and then at the end of the year, we're not really seeing, you know, accomplishments that that would represent, you know, another FTE. So i- if if Jim were able to say, hey, wow, this sounds great, I know how to get get this done, I know we can get from A to B, I'd be more able to say, wow, sounds good. But I'm not even sure if he was online still.
Yes, Jim has his hand raised, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, great.
Clarify my motion first, I.
Well, why don't we go to Vice Mayor and then we'll go to.
Write it up because the.
Vice Mayor, why don't you make that clarification?
Yeah. So this is uh the motion uh direct staff to consider, I didn't say just add, to consider. So I think the staff can come back with options that make sense. Uh so then adding a.
So 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 Vice Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, I have, are you, are you make, are you, are you, are you, are you propensity for uh going to amend your motion uh uh um? Or are you making a new motion? Because I I believe the motion's already been made and seconded.
Yeah, I made the motion, but I didn't write it down, so.
Correct, yes, so but the motion is uh is on the record and has been made and seconded, so. So, you know, this is not going to have any legal effect unless you plan to amend your motion.
Yeah, and I think my motion, in my motion, I did use this language, cause direct the staff to consider. I didn't change that part. And uh but this part I was not able to write it down Google froze. So this part I wrote it down, it might not be exactly the same as I said it. So if you want to consider this amendment, so it's exact, we can consider this amendment. Because I don't remember exactly what I said.
Well, uh Vice Mayor Chow, if if you'll accept a friendly amendment to your motion, then I'll encompass your edits that you have on in the screen right now. And I'll ask you to remove uh the word uh consider to the second line uh and just say direct staff, uh direct the staff to uh no consider, and then write add in the first tick mark underneath.
Oh.
Uh just add, to add a position, and then to add an assistant, a deputy city manager position.
So we don't want to.
No, the I I think to Councilmember Willie's point, if you say consider, then it's nebulous, it's not, it's not direction. It's just a request to consider it, they can come back and say we've considered it and we're not going to do it. So I I I think that's um.
Okay, so I guess we can consider this amendment to my, yeah.
Okay, so.
Charge of strategic planning and outreach, I yeah, I didn't exactly use this language, I was trying to.
Okay.
Find.
Okay, so 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 the amended motion, Vice Mayor Chow, is on the screen. Let me check with your seconder if um Councilmember Moore is amenable to accepting these amendments as the seconder.
Okay, uh well, uh I appreciate that it's it's unclear that uh these are full-time employees or part-time uh for for both. And the reason why is when I look at the assistant deputy city manager position, uh they would wear a couple of different hats. Um so I think that, I think we're looking for a very special person there. Um and for the first one, add a position for the legislative aid government affairs. Um uh you could probably get rid of one of the position words in that sentence.
I agree, I I agree, I think make it just legislative aid and um Vice Mayor Chow, uh aid is AIDE. Uh add a legislative aid position to support the city council and just full-time, full-time in front of legislative.
Full-time.
Full dash time, yes, legislative aid, get rid of slash government affairs position, just add a full-time legislative aid position to support the city.
All right, well, I was appreciating the lack of the the specificity on the.
I I think we should make it full-time. I I mean, it's that that's that's my suggested amendment.
Hmm, okay.
The reason I added a government affairs because I find out each agency has usually a government relations person that helps the agency communicate with other agencies. So this legislative ad, I think not only will help us probably do research, analyze policy, but also maybe do outreach to other agencies, right?
But I mean legislative in in my mind is understood because the nature of what we do is legislative, so they're they're helping the council. Um, you know, fulfill its uh.
But the government relations that means they also can outreach to the community, it's helping us for proper related relation too.
Oh, I mean, again, it's gonna be in the job description, I I would just keep it.
I I actually, I would still, I think I would like to add that, just to be clear. It will be part of the job description and eventually you can use a different term in the.
Okay, then then make it relations, government relations.
Oh, relation. She's.
With a N.
Oh.
So um me, let me check with um your seconder, um Councilmember Moore, would you accept this uh motion as amended?
Oh, I I will, I I accept it. Um I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we uh I don't know if we have a procurement officer, I believe, I believe we do have a procurement officer being added to to staff, because we've, as we noted in an earlier item, that that that's an area that could use some assistance as uh the Moss Adams report um indicated. I'm concerned, uh I would like to have some.
Well, before we start deliberating, Councilmember Moore, I mean, let's let's go back to our our staff officers and I think. Oh, Jim, you don't have your hand raised anymore. Did you want to speak to this uh before we?
Um, I, thank you, Mayor, I was going to, I forgot what I was gonna say. Um we will have to come back, um as Councilman Willie was saying, you know, more of a defined. So if if we go through and the motion is done and and it's approved and everything, um the process essentially is we will have to go and, you know, research creates um the classification, the job description, the salary levels, all of all of all of that behind the scenes. And come back again and present it to council at that time because it's not officially on the books. The position might be there, but the 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 meat of the position isn't there yet, so we will have to come back at another time with all of that um detail on the positions. And and for Councilman Moore, yes, the one of them we had in there that was from the other pre- other presentation did have the procurement officer in there and a budget manager as well.
Okay, uh thanks, Jim, and then um let's uh take it in order.
Wait, do you need a second?
You already have a second, uh Councilmember Moore seconded.
Okay, I mean, she didn't confirm the amendment.
Yes, she did.
I did.
Twice.
Okay.
So so this has been um placed on the table and and seconded. Uh Councilmember Willie, then Councilmember Way.
Yeah, I I left my hand up. I think uh for the most part, that captures the essence of uh where I was hoping we were gonna be and that the city manager did weigh in, so that hopefully we're all on the same page. That being said, yeah, I'm I'm uh happy at this point, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Way.
Okay, I I think Councilmember Moore said some of her concerns and and Councilmember Willie said some concerns. I I have an issue with all of a sudden adding two positions without vetting it, why we need it, what's the job description, how much it's gonna cost? Um for example, the uh deputy student, uh that in charge of strategic, wh- what what is it that? I mean, all of a sudden, this is throwing us at the uh budget session, so I I have an issue with that. I I think, okay, so I'm gonna ask staff this high-level question. We're approving a budget, that's just a proposed budget, according to, correct me if I'm wrong. And that's according to the past budgets, that the staff's proposing a budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. It's a working document where we will have first quarter adjustment, mid-year adjustment, third quarter adjustment. So it's not a set in concrete budget, it's according to the history of our spending, our assets, our um um income, that's the budget's pretty, it's a proposed budget, so it is fluid, it's not set in concrete, is that correct? So that's a question for the staff.
Okay, so I've got Jim with a hand raised as well as Thomas, Jim.
Okay, well, I will, I'll just jump in and Thomas, you can follow me. Yeah, so what we'll, what we're hoping to get tonight is the council. Having the direction saying, you know, we love all this, we don't like that, put that in, take it out. So then we can come back on the seventh with what would hopefully be the final budget. And as Councilmember Way said, yes, once once a budget is adopted, it's already, the joke is through the finance community here. That it's already out of date because things change. We have new forecast updates, everything, something else happens. So. Um it is a fluid. It's a living document from the day it begins to the June, date of June thirtieth. So. Changes can be made throughout the course of the year. You know, if the C D T F A comes in and says, hey, everything's great, or maybe they go, oh, we found issues that. You guys get another ten million dollars and so we can come back again and make um, you know, changes again to the budget. Um so it is fluid. It is, you know, very fluid or dynamic. And um this is just the. The starting point, the control point of where we wanna go during the year. And then, as you've said, Councilmember Way, we have the different updates. At the quarters. So we, you know, the council can give staff directions on which way they wanna continue to go. And then, Thomas, if you had any. You had your hand up, so I didn't know if you wanted to add any.
Nothing additional to add. Thank you.
So my second question is, so um we have these two positions that Vice Mayor would like to have. And if we don't put it into our budget next meeting, but in the middle of, we do. Research and we really need this, we need that, we vet the uh job prescriptions, we get how much it is. And then we consider whether we can do one or two, we can afford maybe three. There's no stopping us to adjust it, add it on, because we do have reserves, we do have places we can move around. I'm just very uncomfortable adding these two positions right now without even vetting anything. I mean, this is the first time I heard about these two jobs. Okay, so I I have an issue with it uh that we have to, you know. Instruct the staff to put it into the budget for us to approve it on June seventh. So that is my main issue. I I'm not objecting to it. I think it needs more vetting, we needs more descriptions, more uh the needs and. For example, um, you know, vice mayors talk about spending our uh money on uh our affordable housing money. That's six hundred million dollars. Six million, not six hundred, I hope it's six hundred million dollars. It it's not a lot of money to even even do a. Low-income projects. If we spend half a million dollar hire someone to do it, it's it's probably not worth it. So I I I would like to more vetting. On this, on these two job descriptions before we put it into next next meeting that we have to prove it. So that is my issue. Not objecting to the suggestions. I hope that this is a document that we approve it, but we can add on it. Uh that's my first concern. My second is I would like to ask the staff to take the uh Councilmember Moore's um. Suggestion, take the asset out of the budget. What's the consequences of doing that? I I I have, uh I I get it, we got so many vehicles and um maybe it's, but it doesn't mean there is a mistake in there. I mean. I I li- I like um our ci- uh city manager's position, let auditor check it out and then. So it doesn't mean we have an issue with it. It it could be nothing. So taking that out, what's the. Consequences for our budget? Are are we not going to have any assets? I I I'm a little unclear of that.
Okay, uh Jimmy, you have your hand raised again?
Um yeah, just um thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Way. From, I guess you could say from an operational standpoint, if we were already working towards. You know, looking for contracts or bids for whatever the replacement vehicles would be, that would be delayed until such time as the council. Approved um our ability to go back and and buy those vehicles that needed purchasing. I don't know if Christina or or Matt had any additional issues.
Thank you, Madam Willie, Director of Public Works. So there there are a couple of vehicles within our plan of replacement that that sort of makes sense. Uh it's actually in the in the equipment side of it. We have uh two John Deere tractors that are old. We'd like to get rid of. Of the two and get one in re- in replacement, so sort of a consolidation. Um so that that sort of makes sense and we're we've got ma- maintenance costs on two now. So if we delay it, we have a few more months of maintenance costs. Um so other than that, you know, we're happy to bring a report back to the council on our vehicle replacement program and what that looks like. I I think we can probably do that very openly uh through through staff efforts and and let you see sort of open book what we have, where they are, who's using them. What their utilization is, uh whatever replacements that go. That's all data that we have uh and we track. So we're happy to bring that back to the council. It may may, it may be easier to put them in the budget now and ask us not to move forward until you further report, but the council's bill tonight is fine.
That's great. Thank you, Director Willie.
So just one more, so the mayor, can I ask one more question?
I I I do see uh Director Alfaro. There's a follow-up clarification there.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so um what's happening in fixed assets and why you're seeing those zeros is um part of our depreciation, how we account for depreciation of the fixed assets. So we do so on a straight-line methodology. And the way it happens is it comes in as a nega- as a as a negative expense. To that budget. So what we can do is before the seventh, come back and show you that detail so you can see the purchases. And then see that depreciation line. And what that does is that allows for that uh fixed assets fund to have fund balance. To then, when it's time to replace that vehicle, you hit up the depreciation uh dollars that have been put in there. So you have those dollars to purchase a new vehicle versus hitting uh the general fund. Um so just a point of clarification there and if that's. I I think Councilmember Moore, you did want a full accounting, so we could show you that and show you where the depreciation expense hits and how that comes back. Into the fixed asset fund and and we should be able to do that before the seventh as well.
Oh, actually, you probably answered my last question. Can we have the information by the seventh? Because it is a new program we have, um we don't understand it. And it doesn't mean it has an issue. It just needs to be explained to us so we understand what it is. So I I would like to. Um have that explained to us by the by the junes, because we we can all benefit from it too. So but I I really. I don't believe in taking something out of the budget and and then so you stop a project, a program. Stop basically the city's operation in certain part of the city operation. Because again, the I see this as a high-level. Proposed budget that we can amend it, adjust it, have questions all the time. So. I I would hope that we don't pull something out and stop something dead on the track and pending on something. So that that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Way. I I see uh hands raised from Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Willie, as well as Councilmember Moore. Um I'll I'll put myself in line after Councilmember Willie and then I'll go back to Councilmember Moore. Uh so Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so not so my understanding from Jim is that this is the perfect time for the council to add or remove items. And there is no other time before this because budget wasn't on the agenda. And employee counts were not on the agenda. And this is the initial study session, talking about surprise. I was very surprised by a few items on our C I P plan the staff proposed. With one-page description, we are supposed to allocate four million dollars to design a city hall that we have not even seen a conceptual design. And then I was surprised at other items on the work program. And we were able to propose items. And then after we propose, then we will come back with more detail and we discuss, we eventually approve. This is the only time we can add any position. There is no other time. So if. Uh I don't understand the the question about vetting. If not this time, when? We we are May nineteenth. Maybe perhaps the staff should have brought the budget to the council earlier. I know that Palo Alto does their budget a lot earlier than the second meeting of May. Maybe next year. Budget could come to the council earlier, so we could consider adding subtracting earlier. But this is kind of like the C I P and study, our work program. But staff proposed something, they proposed something we. Didn't know about, we were surprised, we asked questions, we understand them. And this is also the chance for the council to propose items. Staff can ask questions and understand that. And then it will come back. And then maybe we have need another study session if there is time or maybe we would approve. Maybe we won't approve next time. So.
Okay, folks, uh Vice Mayor Chow, um I I'm gonna try to get to a vote by nine o'clock here. Because uh we're we're running about an hour behind the schedule that allocated here. So. Uh we do have two more items after this. We've got the fee schedule update as well as economic development committee. So. Uh let me, let me go on to Councilmember Willie and then um, you know, hopefully we can um participate a vote fairly soon. So, Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I I think uh I I kinda share uh what I think uh. Uh Councilman Way is concerned about, you know, the adding of uh two. Uh full-time employees without us really having, you know. When when we give direction to staff to go off and start thinking about these things, it kinda sends the message. That we're good with bringing on more employees. And while, like I said before, if you wanna get something accomplished, you gotta get people that are gonna do it. But if we could tone that down a bit and say, look at initially ha- uh adding. One one F T E with the job description that would support that. And see how well that goes. And then, providing everything goes well. Six months into the uh budget year, consider whether or not a second full-time employee. Is needed. Maybe it's only a halftime or maybe uh some some time that exists with the current staff. You know, I mean, we really, I I think we really wanna be cautious. Adding headcount is easy to do. Reducing headcount is almost impossible. So proceeding with very caution, I I'm a. I'm a little bit afraid that our exuberance might over overly uh excite the uh. Increasing the uh headcounts. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, uh Councilmember Willie, thank you. Um I I I guess, I guess what I'll say is that I I think. Uh at least as far as I'm concerned, this is not in a vacuum uh in in terms of thoughts of needing support. Um I I'm glad to hear, Councilmember Willie, your initial thoughts on on needing some assistance to the council, particularly my position, but. I I'm I'm, you know, I I I am spread thin. I I truly, I mean, you know, if you look at the um. The work that I did to get Caltrans to the table uh in, you know, I I I mean, I I don't exaggerate. That probably saved us half a million dollars. Because we would have had to do a matching grant fund with um, you know, the water district. And I I saw how the water districts. Grant funding was spent by V T A, because we went across the street and we, you know, saw that particular program. I I mean, I. I thi- this is not exaggeration. I think I have a really good idea of how a lot of the public dollar is is spent um. And and how to economize it. So so I I I don't think I speak out of school when I say that there would be some um. You know, benefit to the public i- if council had some, yeah, so so just some direct assistance um that that was. You know, we're working towards what what council as a collective whole is is working on to the benefit of the city. Uh so that's, of course, just one example of of what we've done and brought forward um that I I think just isn't really, you know. Fully understood, much less, you know, you've been remotely appreciated by 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 the public. In fact, it's really more the opposite usually. But I'm not gonna get into that. I mean, you know, the the other part about it is that I I I do think, and and it's not that I haven't expressed it. You know, I I've expressed this to our city manager and he can, you know, um tell me if I'm wrong, but but I I have pointed out that. You know, look, we have, we have a major project. We have a Valco major project. We don't have a project manager for it. You know, I've I've pointed out that we have the housing element here. Um and there's nobody in the city manager's office with uh inherent expertise. With regard to these major, you know, planning type of uh projects. I mean, Jim's background uh was in H R as well as finance and. Our assistant city manager's background, uh although it's it's closer, you know, I think is is not quite. Um squarely within, you know, the 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 planning and development portion of things. Although I I've just been really happy with with Diane helping us to deliver the library expansion space and um. You know, I I I know there's a lot of work in the background wi- with the agendas and and such, but. You know, when I look at the housing element and the fact that we really need to do some sincere outreach, we really needed to, you know, be able to. Identify these various types of um, you know, communications that we need to have. And and I realize that, you know. One of the things that 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 I heard in this League of California Cities uh conference that. Four of us went to last week was that communication is so key. And and I discovered that to be the case. As I've ramped up um a a lot of full-time and beyond type of activities, in addition, you know, to to running a business. You know, wh- what I realized is that that communication is is critically important, but I have to ask myself, why am I the one running the? The the coordination of that, right? I mean, in a lot of ways, you know, what what I realize is that. You know, when it comes to things like, you know, groundbreaking for Westport, groundbreaking for, you know, Canyon Crossing. Uh coordinating something for Beta Brothers, you know, talking, you know, getting us to talk to, you know, major applicants. I I mean, that's. That that's really, that's an economic development function. It's it's a planning function. And so, you know, I I I say this very sincerely without, you know, cause for for anything. You know, untoward uh and and without mental reservation. We we need help. You know, we we need help, you know, I I think it really needs to be directly at top. And so when I, when I hear this independent, you know, kind of feedback. That's why, you know, I thought it was really interesting when Vice Mayor Chow was making her her proposals. You know, she had independently talked about, you know, um what what she had eventually written down. As well as, you know, what you had talked about with um, you know, I I think Councilmember Willie, your. Uh comments with regard to a a direct assistant for the mayor, but but of course. You know, it it went towards the city council, which I think is much more appropriate as the motion on the table right now describes. So I I I would actually. Fully be in support of both of these positions because I I just think that they're that needed. Um and and I have expressed. You know, I've I've talked with um, you know, our staff about how it would be described in legislative aid seems to be, you know, kind of an acceptable. Description. Um you know, I I look at, you know, Cupertino does have sixty thousand people, that's true. San Jose has uh many more, right? But then they have ten council members and each council, you know, member has a staff of two, I believe, possibly three. We have none. You know, we we literally have none. You know, we have, we have an executive assistant that we share with the city manager. And if you, again, if you look at our budget. If you look at the budget for council compensation over what we are contributing to the community. You know, it's 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 preposterous. It's under minimum wage in nineteen eighty. Okay, so and, you know, I I don't know about the rest of council, but this is insurance that I don't need. You know, I I mean, I I have an alternative source of insurance. And over time, it's been kind of categorized. If you go to, you know, I think Transparent California or whatever it is. You know, one of the years, it makes it look like I had more, you know, insurance than Rod Singson, Steven Sharp. But in fact, they're actually getting compensated for that insurance, you know. And somehow I couldn't get, like, so it's just, you know, I I I I think it's very silly to talk about this from a compensation-based perspective because. You know, for for all intents and purposes, we don't get any. Um but what we do get is the pleasure of a lot of, you know. Railing um and and lambasting and, you know, smear, you know, all that kind of good stuff. Um but but I hope that, you know, it doesn't kind of, you know, hit us internally and and we actually have. The personnel-related resources to deliver what we deliver. Frankly, I don't know how we deliver as council, what we do. I I'll just, I'll just say it one time. I I think our community is extremely fortunate to have the five of us there, you know, to um, you know, provide these services. But I I I do worry, you know, and and from a very, you know, kind of um. Uh I guess egocentric perspective, I I worried about what will happen to to our council and our city after I I I roll off. I mean, that's. That's eight years of experience. I'm not a dumb person. I'm I'm well-educated and quite intelligent. I mean, I I've dedicated quite a bit, you know, to this. So. I think if we were to, you know, bring in a council aide, um and I had, you know, four months of overlap, say. I I I think that's a pretty good transition. Um and then as far as the, you know, uh the other position goes, I yeah, I. You know, I'm supporting the motion. I'm talking about the motion on the table. You know, I I I'm in support. I'm in support of adding that other position as well. So I I I think I heard, I I'm so, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but. Was that, was that your voice, Chris, that I that that uh that that cut into there?
Uh I don't, I don't think so, Mayor.
Oh, that wasn't yours? Okay, I apologize. Uh I I thought you were trying to cut me off because I was I was getting, running afoul of uh the boundaries or something, but. Okay, yeah, tho- those are my comments. I I'm I'm in support of this motion, you know, honestly. Look, you know, I graduated from Harvard Law in two thousand and three. You know, my billing rate should be in the four figures. You guys are getting that, you know, over two months. Okay, so like only one hour of my time. And and I I just, I I don't approach it with ego, but. I think it's preposterous, frankly, that we're talking about this in terms of like, you know, what we actually, you know, um bring to the table. you know, what we actually, you know, bring to the table and, you know, what we're being asked to, you know, consider. So, so I just, you know, and, and also for the good of the continuity of the city, I think it just makes sense. And, and also with regard to the planning, the planning equation is so critically important. I mean, you know, it, it's, we, we really need help. I, I'm just, I, I, I can't, I can't say it anymore clearly. I mean, it, it's just an, an area that we can't let continue the way it's going because I, I just, personally, I'm just so, spread so thin trying to, you know, interconnect these communication-oriented, you know, aspects. And I think if we had someone directly, you know, working with us, then it just becomes logistically much easier. Thanks. Let's go to Councilmember Moore followed by Councilmember Willie, and then I, I really would like to call this question.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, and I agree with it. Going back to the, the questions about the, the fixed assets acquisition, I would like attachment C that we were given, the vehicles list made a public as well, and I want to point out, you know, I am, I am the, the chair of the audit committee, so I do look at these things very seriously. And when I'm looking at this vehicle, vehicle listing which they're providing, showing that they want to replace vehicles that don't actually even show up on the vehicle list that we were given. So they replace the Toyota one-ton sprayer, $115,000, it's not on the list. Replace the forklift, $60,000, it's not on the list. Replace the John Deere tractor, I, not on the list. New forklift pallet stacker, not on the list. That's why I want to see these, these items audited and brought back, and I think, I think that's, it's serious to me. We also aren't showing any revenues for the vehicles that we've been selling. So I, I agree with you, let's call the question, move on. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Way.
I do like the staff to answer Councilmember Moore's question about why they're not showing on the staff, maybe it's showing someone else. I want to say why I'm, I'm, don't vote no. I have no objection on the positions, I just don't like, I just don't think, like Vice Mayor says, she doesn't like surprises. I don't like surprises either. We have not vetted, vetted this, and this is a total surprise. We don't even know what the job descriptions, what the salary, so it's not that I object to the positions or the need of it, it's the method that's just being proposed. I want to ask this question because Vice Mayor says this is the only time we can add staff, which I don't think is true. So can, can I get an answer for that from staff?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please, Director Alfaro.
And so, yes, you can add positions at first quarter, you can add positions as a separate agenda item. Historically, it has been the desire of the council to bring all new positions as part of proposed, proposed budget or final budget, but there's nothing holding us to that if council wanted to do it differently. We have brought positions as part of mid-year and as part of their own agenda items before with, we just needed to have justification for why we needed to bring them now versus waiting for the proposed budget cycle because we do know that was council's direction at one point in time to only bring them here.
Okay, thank you, Christina. So I just want to explain to my colleagues why I don't think I, I'm going to vote no because this is a total surprise to me, it's, hasn't been vetted, I do believe we can add it on first quarter, have more job descriptions, the cost, what is do, what, what do we want these two positions to do, and that's the reason. And second reason about the fixed assets, I want the staff to answer those questions of Councilmember Moore, but I want to emphasize to stop something of program debt in, right away, and then it, it, I just don't think is the right way to do it. And, and also a program have some, is new to us, doesn't mean it has issues. So I, I want to make this two things very clear, I have nothing against what we're doing or my council members' proposals, I just don't think this is a proper way to, to do it.
So, Mayor.
And I do like the staff to answer the question on Councilmember Moore's about the, the cars.
I'm sorry, what was that, Councilmember Way? What about the questions about cars?
Councilmember Moore has some, I would say accusatory things about staff, this is not on the list, and where, where's the money go after it's sold? I think I would like the staff to answer those questions.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I would take exception to the accusatory characterization. I mean, I think that, you know, it's.
I could, I make some comment later, I think something important to put on the record.
So Vice Mayor Chow, if you make a brief, that's fine. Let me go to Director Morley of Public Works at this point. So Director Morley, we have a request from Councilmember Way to talk a little bit about the vehicle program, and you stated that they're auctioned off, but how are those proceeds reflected in the budget?
Thank you, yeah, the, the vehicles are auctioned, that money comes back in as the Director of Administrative Services talked about earlier, back into the fund so that the dollars are recaptured and, and the finance can probably tell you more exactly about the path that those take, those dollars take, but it's a regenerative, regenerative process. With respect to the vehicles that are on the list on page 548 of the budget document, there's two sections there, there's a vehicle replacement and an equipment replacement. The list that was provided was, was a, a full list of all of our vehicles. Unfortunately, sometimes those requests come through as when their vehicles are taken very specifically. So we, we do have a vehicle list, we have an equipment list, they're handled differently because they're, they're logged and tracked differently, equipment is, is logged and tracked by hours and vehicles are typically logged and tracked by, by, by miles, so it's a little bit different measuring, and, and so there's a need to track them differently through our systems. So we can certainly provide all of that. I've talked about fleet programs many, many times, it's a fun thing to talk about, happy to, to take you through our, our program here, it's a, it's a solid program.
All right. Well, thank you, Director Morley. And then Christina, you have your hand raised again, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. So since the question came up from Councilmember Moore, we've determined why you can't see the revenues in that account, because that account specifically is for budget unit 985 and the revenue is allocated in that fund but at program 001. So what we'll do between now and the June 7 date is we'll update our, our, our budget document to make sure it includes both the 001 and the 985 budget unit for fund 630, and that should bring in the revenue so you're able to see those from the, the sale of those assets.
Okay, thank you, Director Alfaro, thank you, Director Morley. So, yeah, I, I think these are, you know, points spring up and, you know, good to know about, you know, how our, how our fleet is doing. I know that our fleet looks really good, and Director Morley, maybe with your, you know, baseline comparison, you can give us some insight as to how we perform, you know, these of the other cities or towns. So I, I would call a question, but I do have two hands raised, and so that, that would actually defeat the call, so let me, let me just do this. Vice Mayor Chow, if you can make your comments brief, Councilmember Willie the same, I will ask for a vote after that, hopefully those will be the remainder of the hands raised. Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so the reason I, I added the government relations to the first position is within the last month or two, I had to, I reached out to Valley Water Government Relations and Grant Department, and they told me that they actually offer grant to city department. And I asked what grants they provided to Cupertino, they provided the grant for Fall Festival and Holly Festival, none for the city. We could have applied for Earth Festival, we didn't know. And then for the BTA grant, it's actually under a grant that's from a bond major, and they said that, that grant sit there, they never used it, but not even, not enough people apply. Many of the projects apply for our community program might qualify for Valley, Water Valley grant, and we would have known if we had this kind of person to help us. Verizon Government Relations told me they have granted for small business too, and I also reached out to UC Government Relations because our residents are concerned about college admission rate to UC Berkeley. And I reached out to Project Sentinel, Habitat for Humanity, Silicon Valley Housing Authority to talk about affordable housing, and this could all be helped with legislative aid so that I can spend the last time connecting.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you'll need a rapid comment.
And sorry, one more item that I think is essential. Let me share my screen. Since we are at the budget, I think it's important to point out that the previous council requested staff to come back with financing options, and then after they reviewed the option, they request the staff to keep the budget for new city hall to be under $40 million. When the staff came back and say they could not find an option to be under $40 million, that council decided to drop the new city hall. And then three years later, they can't come back and do, started a city hall renovation project in 2018. And, and then somehow they, that, they didn't make progress on that. So this count, I think in the very, very beginning, Jim pointed out Cupertino is very healthy financially, that's not the extent, that's because previous council were very cautious when making big capital investment before we even know where the, we would, how we would finance it, and so.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, let me, let me, let me give you the floor to Councilmember Willie, and then Chris, before I do that, did you want to make comment? I noticed your hand was raised a moment ago.
It's no longer necessary, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, and then I'll call a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Also want to say, very eloquent, very descriptive in your, in your wording of the type of help and, and how, how it would help the community. And that's, you know, not quite the way that it's worded in Vice Mayor Chow's document, but the fact that you have articulated it so well, yes, bingo. We're, this council is so engaged, so wanting to get the community informed about all the things that are going on, whether it's Westport, Canyon View, you name it, and making sure there's complete transparency, everything is open to the public, the books, everything's itemized. So I, let's, let's get Cupertino into 2022 and let's not be running like we're 2018. And that means we need the people to, to help. So I fully support what we're doing. Thank you for your, your narrative on that, it greatly helps.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Way, your, your hand is raised, you know, I, I do have, did you want to make comment?
I do want to say just one sentence following Councilmember Willie, I totally agree, but hold on to this, your description, Mayor's good description and Vice Mayor's description don't match totally. That's why I'm saying, no, I need that vested before we can approve on a budget.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. You know, personally, you know, if this passes, I, I hope that we can earn your vote, you know, before the budget gets passed, so. You know, and I will say, this is, this is quite a remarkable achievement and moment, we're right about to conclude the, the budget part of this, and, you know, we've done the work plan, we visited upon CIP, and now there's this sort of trilogy of the, the budget kind of converging together with it. Councilmember Moore, did you really need to have last word? Okay, so why not, if you can just kind of encapsulate it really briefly, and then we'll, we'll take a vote on the motion.
Sure, Mayor. I, I would like when this does come back that staff provides some information and thoughts on the, on the positions that are suggested within the budget, and I look forward to hearing some comments about it. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, great. Well, thanks very much, and, you know, with that, I, I think we've gotten a really comprehensive set of discussions on all aspects of our, our city frankly. So Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
No.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with Way voting no.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. It is now 9:20, let's return at 9:26, and we have a couple of items left on our agenda. We'll see you in a few minutes.